Welcome, everybody, to the February 9th, 2021 Half Moon Bay Planning Commission Meeting. All are welcome. Bridget, do you want to do your usual wonderful preamble?
Sure. And like Commissioner or Chair Reddick said, welcome to the February 9th, 2021 meeting of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission. We are broadcasting this meeting live on local Channel 27 and Pacific Coast TV's website as well. We do have a number of community members in attendance this evening, and all will be welcome to speak. There are a few etiquette items to review for attendees. The Planning Commission Chair will open and allow public comment during the specific agenda items, as well as the general public, um, public speaking, or I'm sorry, public forum at the very beginning of this meeting. Those willing to speak will be recognized. You can raise your hand, and we will acknowledge you on the list and follow suit from there. For those of you that are just joining us that haven't been on a Zoom call yet in the last year, if you are on telephone only, you can push star six to raise and unraise your hand, and star nine to mute and unmute yourself. Otherwise, tablets and such all have your little raising hand icon, and you will be given three minutes to speak during that time. We did this after, or actually, I guess, late this evening, we have sent two emails to the Planning Commission staff, sent a memo and another correspondence as late as 6:30 this evening. So please double-check your emails for the Planning Commission, and it is posted on the website in the agenda on the very bottom under correspondence. I would like to thank you all for your patience during our remote meeting sessions, and I will hand the meeting back over to Chair Reddick to officially begin the meeting.
Thank you, Bridget. So I'll open the meeting and invite everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which it stands, Bridget, when you please do a roll call of Commissioners present.
Yes, Commissioner Hernandez.
I am present.
Commissioner Goran.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Here.
Vice Chair Polgar.
Here.
And Chair Reddick.
Here.
All Planning Commissioners are present this evening.
Excellent. The first item on our agenda is approval of minutes from our last meeting of January 26. Do any Commissioners have corrections or comments to those minutes? I don't see anybody.
I'm not seeing anyone.
In that case, it would be good to have a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Polgar. Bridget, I guess a roll call is in order to motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Goran.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Reddick. I'm sorry, Vice Chair Polgar, I'm sorry, I'm so used to your old roles. I apologize. Sarah looked at me like, what?
Yes.
And Chair Reddick.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. At this, at this point in our meeting, as at every Planning Commissioner meeting, we invite members of the public to address the Commission on any matter whatsoever other than the items that are agendized for tonight's meeting. So if you, if you want to comment on the lone item on our agenda, which is discussion of the ordinance concerning short-term rentals, please hold that till we get to it. But if you would like to address the Commission on anything else, now is the time to be heard.
I have one.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing.
Bill Boston, and I'll let him, allow him to speak.
Sorry, I'm just getting used to the unmuting.
It's okay. You can speak now. Go ahead.
This might or might not relate to your main agenda item, but it's a broader question and affects certainly those of us that live in Ocean Colony, but many more in Half Moon Bay. And that is, what legal analysis have you undertaken with regard to your legal obligations to follow permits that you have previously, as a city, issued and that occurred before the Coastal Commission was put in place in, what is, 1975 or '76? Well, that's, that's an intriguing question. I'm not sure I completely understand the permits that you're talking about. But in any case, we, Mr. Boston, this forum is not really designed for question and answer from the public. But I'd like to, I'd like, perhaps Jill or someone from staff could give you explicit advice on how to contact City Hall to get an answer to that question.
Mr. Boston's welcome to contact me through email, and we can, or our phone, our contact information is on the website, and I'll be happy to speak with him tomorrow or the next day.
Thank you, Jill. Any other folks desiring public comment?
I do have one other, Ray Olson.
Mr. Olson, if you have comments on topics other than the short-term rental thing, now would be the time.
No, I'm just checking my audio. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm done.
Okay.
All right. So we have, it looks like I have no further public comments.
Okay. Well, I close the public hearing, and we'll move to our agenda topic number one. The public hearing item is, is concerned with our study session on the short-term vacation rental draft ordinance. And Jill, will you be making, will you be kicking that off for us?
I will, and I just need a moment to get the presentation up, and Joe Butcher and I will be presenting to you tonight on this item.
Very good.
Mark is here as well to, my legal guidance. You haven't seen Sarah for a few meetings, so we welcome her to be helping us with this ordinance.
Yes, welcome, Sarah. We'll take your time and get your
Thank you.
Technology weaponry aligned.
Looks like a good start. All right. Good evening, Chair Reddick and Commission and members of the community who are here tonight. We're really happy to be back after a bit of a gap in time to talk about the short-term rental ordinance. And to that end, we have prepared a presentation to provide some overview and background to catch folks up who haven't been involved in this in the past, as well as to plunge ahead, because we, we do have a draft ordinance with detailed language with the intent of getting lots of feedback on that. This is, this is what this is all about. Staff is not going to be offended if there's things you don't like about this. This is, this is all about getting public comment and having discussion and seeing where it goes next. So tonight, we will be starting out, just reminding everyone that this has been, we've been working on this for a while with a few gaps, which were described in your staff report. First of all, there has been Coastal Commission guidance about short-term rentals. Short-term vacation rentals are well known at this point. We're not going to go through a definition of that. People are very familiar with, with the Airbnb or the VRBO types of rentals in, that are either a whole house or part of a house, and can occur throughout, frankly, throughout the city. There, there's a number of them operating now. And they are supportive of coastal access and coastal recreation and are in fact encouraged by the Coastal Commission, while they are also, the Commission has provided guidance that local discretion is also really important because of the context for each neighborhood or town where, where they might occur. So we continue to provide their written guidances, attachments to your staff report to make sure that we keep that in mind. Now, from the city's perspective, our policy context has, has come over, well, we started three years ago with our first study session. We actually had a study session about short-term rentals along with accessory dwelling units back in 2018. And as you well know, we've been working on a land use plan and quite a few other ordinances during that time period, and we, we had trouble picking it back up. But we had a really well-respondered to survey in fall 2019, and then I came back with a study session just over a year ago, and we were ready to forge ahead with, with a version of this draft ordinance that you see as attachment one to your staff report, right when our first shelter order came in. And so we needed to set that aside and work on quite a few other things. So we now have picked it back up and are happy to dig into any of the detailed policy topics that come up in, in the draft language, noting that Joe and I are going to do a pretty high overview of it. That said, the October 2020 adoption of the city's land use plan also provides a new piece of policy guidance for us. Now, we, we note that the land use plan is not yet certified by the Coastal Commission, but it, it was, it's been submitted to the Coastal Commission, and specific policy in Chapter Two Development was really, came out of a lot of the discussions that we've had with the Commission about short-term rentals. And you, you saw this policy, and so has City Council, highlighted just a few of the key themes about this, the intent to really have these uses, allow them, but make sure they're compatible and appropriate in Half Moon Bay's neighborhoods, and then addressing a lot of additional detail in this. So, so this is new. We didn't, we didn't have this guidance the last time we were working on this. All right. So the, these are the topics of the, the draft ordinance that you'll be looking at tonight. And I, I'm going to go ahead and just dive in a little bit to the basic construction of it from some of the fundamental questions that you answered at your last study session. And we really wanted to know, with, with some confidence about where these should be allowed to be located, and what kind of units should, should they be allowed within, because there's a very clear recognition that short-term rentals can have an impact on housing stock and its availability. And so the feedback we really had is that, yep, any, any house in any, you know, a house can be in so many different zoning districts. It could be in any of the R districts. You could have homes or condos in the multifamily zones or the mixed-use districts. Existing housing stock is in, not, not a lot, but in the, even in some of the undeveloped PUDs, but the developed PUDs have short-term vacation rentals operating in them now, including Ocean Colony. And then Urban Reserve does have a few houses as well. This is not intended to, on, have short-term vacation rentals be a new use in an urban reserve area where there isn't a house now. This is, this is about houses that are already there. Also note, and we recognize that, that you are, is poised to be replaced with the new, um, but postal, now it escapes me for a second. Oh, my goodness. They have a new district that we're preparing for you, and it's going to come forward, and I'll, I'll get it in a second, and, and get back to that. So anyway, we're, we're going to be tracking how this short-term rental ordinance would affect housing types, both by zoning district and the type of units. The Commission was real clear in your last, in its last study session about a year ago, that you were really concerned about using using multifamily units for short-term rentals and the impact on, on that housing type, because it's in such short supply, and it's such an important part of our housing stock. So specifically, we have in our notes, and going back and looking over that meeting, these not-allowed types of units, accessory dwelling units, unless, of course, they're grandfathered, which is something we worked on in a different ordinance, mobile homes, and multifamily development with four or more units. On the flip side of that, single-family and condominium dwelling units, so really ownership types of housing units, and there was support for that. And then there was duplexes and triplexes, and a little bit of, hmm, maybe that could work and maybe not. And we've provided a way to do that, and I'll be happy to talk about it in more depth. But some of the guidance that came from work that we did with City Council on tenant protection measures, about protecting mom-and-pop property owners, really supported us thinking about how to allow it without overwhelming duplexes, duplexes and triplexes with short-term rental use, when we really want to make sure those units are retained for residential purposes, which is what they're supposed to be. So you will have noticed a section of, of the draft ordinance where duplexes and triplexes are put out as possible if they have an owner-occupied unit, and we're suggesting some limitation on the number of nights per year in that case. There's a qualifying, basic, fundamental approach to this ordinance. This is really a matter of, we hope you'll be discussing tonight. The primary residence criteria came out of your last study session. What we had been working on over and over again was limitations on number of nights per year and splitting hairs between hosted and unhosted. And this is where the, kind of the theme of our approach came from, which was, make sure that short-term rentals are appropriate, well-managed, safe, and that we can enforce them on, but let's give, let's give these property owners some flexibility. And this was a different way to do it than on what we're seeing in a lot of the other codes that we've studied. And in fact, I think in your memo, one of the commenters that we received information from today has their own study of other cities' ordinances, and it, it includes a lot of those night restrictions. And that's what we had been looking at, too, is your staff, because so many of the coastal zone cities do it that way. This is a different approach, and we, we have thought about it a lot, and Sarah is happy to field some questions about this as well. She's written a lot of these ordinances, and she's seen how, how they come about in terms of enforcement. And rural coastal is the name of the district, and I was stuck, stuck there. Thank you. All right. So with that, we are now going to plunge in to the nitty-gritty bits of this ordinance, and Joe Butcher's going to cover this at a little bit higher level. Joe has been, he's our community preservation specialist. He's been working on this. He worked on the survey. He's been working on the ordinance, and he has a really great perspective about it, because he's the one who gets the complaints about short-term rentals, when, when they do come in. And he, he understands what concerns people, and he also has a really good sense of what makes it easy or difficult to, to enforce the standards from a very practical perspective. So Joe, welcome back. You're two commission meetings in a row now. You're becoming a regular.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, welcome, Joe.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for having me. Yeah, as Jill said, I do get a lot of complaints. Not a lot, but I do get the complaints that we get on these. So having, you know, understanding what we're looking at, as well as returning to this council or commission meeting after our last study session, we've kept in mind a lot of the things that we wanted to implement, or at least lay out in this draft, of what we heard from the community, as well as what we heard from you guys that you want to see reflected. And I won't dive into this too deeply. We'll just touch base on the, the points that seem to be the most, kind of touched upon the last time we met in January. And that would be just basically a good neighbor policy. You know, if you're going to be the new neighbor, the new short-term rental in town, that you notify your neighbors. You give them a heads up that, hey, I'm going to put this on the market. We're going to have some people in and out here. And we've come up with just a reasonable notification process that we think you guys will appreciate, similar to just a notification whenever we have a director's meeting, a small little placard or a little sign that's put out front, something to notify for a certain amount of time for the neighbors within about 100 feet vicinity, that, that this could potentially impact them, or not at all. But again, good neighbor policy is what we heard, and we kind of agree with that. What you see here on this slide, the rest of it, this is all pretty standard for all cities, just business license requirement. We already require that, so that doesn't change anything. TOT, same thing. We require that currently. So that just kind of follows along with consistency. Building and fire code, all of that, and indemnification and insurance, that's, that's all standard language. That's all really just for protection of the city and the renters. So that's, we don't really need to dive into that at that moment. The main thing is, you know, for compliance, if, if anybody wants to begin to be a renter, then obviously, they need to make sure that they are complying to all building and code enforcement codes prior to moving forward in the registration process. Next slide, please. I'm not sure who's around this slide. I need one slide. There you go. Thank you. So moving on, another thing that really kind of touched on was, you know, a lot of the complaints or concerns that I've received. I say complaints because I'm code enforcement, so I do get a number of complaints, and some of them end up just being concerns that we'll just make sure that you guys hear, is just the concern for the number of how many short-term rentals that are on property, like on a parcel number. So again, consistent with a lot of the other coastal cities, typically, the maximum number is one for parcel, and that's kind of what we just put through in this draft as well, because it just seems to make sense for what we've been hearing and what other coastal cities are doing. Now, another thing that I, I kind of want to touch base on is the maximum occupancy of overnight occupancy. We have received numerous complaints, and I'll go ahead and say that, about several different renters, Airbnbs or VRBOs in the area that are renting out to 15 or 20 persons. So we really wanted to kind of, again, stay pretty consistent and close to what the other cities are doing, but like, take into consideration what works for our small town, what really works for pretty much all these coastal cities, as well as what we think will work for ours, for two persons per bedroom, up to eight persons, a household, that's adults, and then, you know, 12 and under is typically exempt. So that way, we're really limiting at about eight persons, or at least adult persons, per night, you know, so that it's not a party house, but it is a vacation rental. And with that being said, again, along the lines of how many persons are in ownership of the short-term rentals, either whether on property or not, we're also looking at maybe just one per town, per city. Next slide, please. Staying consistent to what all the codes that I've come across are talking about is just traffic and parking, trash, what you guys have expressed as a concern for our community. And, you know, with traffic and parking, we're talking, you know, one car for one bedroom, one to two cars for two to three bedrooms, and an additional car per additional bedroom, but also allowing for at least 50% of parking on-site for occupancy. Basically, we want to make sure, because, you know, different-sized houses have different capacity for parking, we want to make sure that they're not throwing all the cars into the street, that they can also adequately house some of that parking there, and minimize traffic within the neighborhood and keep the integrity of your residential neighborhoods. Trash and recycling, we're going to keep that as just consistent, as with regular trash and recycling that we would, that it stays without the public right-of-way, you keep clean, you keep it, you keep it nice and neat. We've even talked about having it coincide, or at least some manuals or guidelines coinciding with neighborhood residential garbage pickup, so that if somebody happens to be there whenever the garbage needs to be picked up, that they can do that, rather than leaving garbage out in the street for three or four days at a time, so that rodents or anything can get into it. It just seems to be, that's a good way to handle that. Anyway, and special events. This is a big one that we've heard from a lot of people, not just the Commission, but we've heard this one, just a lot of people that are really concerned. The people are renting out houses for bachelor parties, bachelorette parties, corporate events. So we've really just honed in on, these are for vacation rentals, again, not for party houses. Yeah. Next slide, please. And, kind of, I've lost my own place here. Oh, so, pretty standard. Again, this is very standard language with, obviously, any of the hosting platforms are going to have to adhere to our regulations, and any renters will have to adhere to the hosting platform regulations. And with that, as I said, we've talked about having, the, the hosters having our regulations posted onsite, having a little manual to reference, you know, so that those persons renting know what, what is expected of them, and should be also available on the platforms they're renting from. That being said, for those short-term rental owners, we will also take into consideration the violations that we receive, or the complaints that we receive, and put them liable for possible revocation of their registration and their vacation rental, meaning we're, we're kind of at this point right now, and it's open for discussion, but we're kind of at a two-strikes and you're out. And that, that could be more or less, we'll talk about this. Again, this is all just open for discussion, see where you guys are with this. But knowing that there is a process, at least in place, to where if we have repeat offenders, then we can pull that, we can pull their registration, and they can go through an appeal process as necessary. we can pull their registration and they can go through an appeal process as necessary to try to state their claim. Next slide, please. Okay, now this is a, this is kind of a big one. I get this question a lot about existing. So for, we have a lot of existing short term rental operators out there, right? And so realistically, we want to make this transition as easy as possible, once it gets moving. So we're talking about early, excuse me, for those that are already have an existing short term rental that we give them at least a six month registration period to be able to get these inspections that are necessary to get the registration and to get all the things that we've asked for in our just registration packet. And, and, and six months seems to be a reasonable time, but again, open for discussion. And lastly, as Jill touched upon with primary residence, primary residency is something that we've really heard a lot from with the community and a lot from with the commission at the last hearing that we had. And with this, we, we gave a three, three year grace period potentially for those that own a property that it's not their primary residency to be able to convert their short term rental into a primary residency. We do expect for you guys to, you know, take a look at that and see what you think is reasonable and what seems to be the most ideological for our town. But just something to be able to, you know, give those persons that aren't here an opportunity to become, you know, half moon Bay community members. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jill so that she can go over a couple of our policy points of interest to kind of where we began with this and the very beginning to how we've evolved to where we are now, based on, you know, again, all the comments we've received, the surveys, the meetings and, and basically how we got to where we are.
Thank you, Joe.
Oh, I, I, actually, I'm sorry, Jill, there is one more thing. I, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Last thing, for these persons that already have an existing or intend on having a new short term rental, I will be available for one-on-one consultations, once we have this registration available, to sit down and resume in person, however, we'll make it work for whoever and however it works easiest. But we will be available, I will be available to take them through this application process to make sure they have everything they need, they need to be compliant to continue to operate. That, that's the last thing, I apologize. Now I'll turn it over to Jill.
That is good. I was going to make sure you reached out about that because it's, it's really important. All right. So I'm back to the thinking about how did we come up with the, this particular draft and the context for this study session. We really gave it our best effort to codify in this preliminary, preliminary way, what we think we heard and ways to balance some of the tensions that are associated with short term rentals. As I already mentioned, we had been really focused on the number of nights per year. We're not recommending this broadly anymore. If the commission wants to bring this back in, that is absolutely fine and we'll, we'll dig back into it. But we thought you pivoted about a year ago. And again, the primary residence requirement really is much easier to enforce. And it's a, it's really a, a great statement about the intended use of the property, which is residential for residential use. We also were spending quite a bit of time on talking about hosted and unhosted short term rentals. And at your last study session, the commission was really picking through definitions and our attorney had given us quite a bit of advice about definitions. And we were hearing quite a few scenarios that cracked up in some gray areas. And it, it would be really hard to enforce some of these things over time. We understand that there's more concern about whole house rentals for long periods of time, especially for large groups versus those that are typically thought of as hosted where the operator is hosting someone in a part of a home. And that said, these things shift and change on, from a different contract to contract. And each operator might want to be doing a bit of each. So from the flexibility perspective, this was really not tenable from the way we were looking at it. All right. And then there are a couple of other things that we, we didn't move forward with, even since the very first study session, we talked about this and I just, I wanted to bring it back up because some people still are asking about it. Some cities limit the total number of short term rentals that are allowed in the town and their particular jurisdiction. And they have, in some cases, quite elaborate systems for how to get in line, get in the queue to do one. We are really concerned about doing that and I, we didn't hear the commission ever go along this path. We do know that this could be very competitive, like what you might see with measure D from time to time. Furthermore, it really favors the first one in and it might not be favoring the best ones or the ones that are going to endure the longest. And, and we'd, we'd have a heck of a hard time advising on what the right number would be. And I'm sure lots of people would have lots of opinions, but that's why you're not seeing it in here. That never, that really never caught, got any traction. Now, this exception that we're putting forward, we're hoping you will discuss tonight. The idea of primary residence. The discussion in your January 2020 study session included public comment from some operators who had short term rentals where they were not their primary residents. And they happened to be operating without complaints and doing pretty well. And your staff is still concerned about those because that's a, that's a house that's not being used for housing. It's, it's really being used for a commercial entity at that point. But we thought the feedback was, well, let's think about what might be appropriate in terms of exceptions. So we've, we've crafted an approach for you to think about, which would be instead of a ministerial process, which is really how we intend to register these with, with the kind of work that Joe was talking about. And this would be discretionary and it would require a planning commission hearing with the use permit. Noting that the use permit finding is quite broad. This is right out of your zoning code with regards to not being detrimental to the welfare or injurious to property or improvements. You can add additional findings to use permits relative to the type of use permit that it is. So for example, in other parts of the code where we have parking exceptions, we have specific findings that the planning commission would need to make to grant those particular types of parking exceptions. In this case, if you're interested in having an option for non-primary residents with a use permit, you, you could consider having more criteria. We didn't put it in this draft code, but we're putting this out here that the kinds of things that the commission could do with such a use permit, whether it's codified or not, is put a term on such uses or limit the number of nights per year or other things that in your opinion would help make the use achieve the finding of being harmonious with the neighborhood. All right, so we're, we're wrapping up here and I just want to emphasize again that we understand that there's folks, and we're happy to see there's quite a few people here tonight. Almost 15 attendees this evening. And we're looking forward to, to hearing their thoughts about this at this point. And but we would expect to have more feedback after this evening. And so Joe will be available to have those meetings and I will as well. This is an important part of the process is vetting a code before we go into public hearing. We did not want this to be a meeting with a lot of pressure. Really wanted hopefully to provide the commission with what they need to have a really thoughtful discussion and give us some more time. Also note, there's a few more things that are not in this ordinance. What was provided to you is just focused on the short term rental regulations specifically. A final ordinance would need to have all the tie-ins to each district. This was drafted to sit in your residential zoning district code, but we would have additional tie-ins for other districts where these would be allowed and we would need to have a consistency thing. So this is, this is just the core of it. And when you see this come back, there'll be quite a bit more. Now, on timeline, you know, we, we can prepare the rest of this quite quickly and we could be back to the commission with a notice public hearing in late March. But we're not sure about what the pace should be for the community or for the commission. So we're hoping to learn about that tonight. And usually takes a month or so between a planning commission recommendation to bring an item like this forward to city council. And they would have two readings. They, they have a first reading, which is really where they take most of the public comment. They may want a study session, so we'll, we'll learn about that as well. And then when it's all done, there's always that last step. This is part of your zoning code. So this is also part of the local coastal program implementation plan. And it requires certification by the coastal commission. So we would then package it up and submit this as an LCP amendment to, to the coastal commission. And that is our presentation tonight. This slide, of course, represents our very typical order of operations for hopefully getting just real specific clarifying questions from the commission that we can, hopefully will help your dialogue. And there's plenty of time for public comment. This is your only agenda item and plenty of time for discussion. And we, we also obviously are very open. If, if you need to have an extended study session, if it needs to continue to another meeting, do let us know about that as well. So with that, we appreciate your indulgence in listening to our presentation. I'm going to take this down now. So if you want any of these slides back up, let me know. But I think, I think you have everything in your staff.
Well, thank you, thank you, Jill and Joe. An awful lot of hard work has gone into this, starting three years ago. And the stress of having to put it on hold for, for the health crisis of the last year is, has been hard, I know. But let's see if commissioners have clarifying questions. And Commissioner Benjamin has his virtual hand up.
My virtual hand up, yes. Thank you. So thank you for the presentation. It was interesting, I, there were a couple of questions that I had that would sort of help me and maybe help the public as they weigh in with their comments. The first is to understand if there is a relative urgency associated with consideration. I recall when we were considering the ADU matter, we were in this uncomfortable situation that if we didn't have an ordinance, anything the state said was okay was going to happen. And we had to have an ordinance in order to have any additional local control. And so my first clarifying question is, are we in an analogous situation today? Or are we in a position where we can afford to proceed carefully, deliberately, without an understanding, without incurring significant adverse consequences as we might have in the ADU situation?
So I think Sarah and I can still fill in if she thinks I missed the boat on some of this. We think you have time. At the same time, it's been a long time to get this done. And we believe that the intensity of use of these could really pop up as COVID health orders are relaxed over time. And because there's been so much input and you've, you've got a lot of it put together, we, we're hoping we could keep making forward progress. This is not, in my opinion, specifically like the ADU situation. This is discretionary for the city to do. Right now, half moon day allows short term rentals and we require collection of the transient occupancy, occupancy tax and acquiring a business license. That said, we don't have these nice things included as well about registering and having an inspection and indemnification and insurance and some, you know, really important things that we, we hope could come forward sooner than later.
Right, I'm not questioning the desire to have an ordinance. I'm just trying to understand. And my belief as always is that speed is the byproduct of accuracy. There, I can think of too many times where I've tried to hurry and I made a mistake. So I'm, I'm anxious to understand that. So thank you. One of the changes in the recommendations from the last time I remember looking at it was the one that you, I think you highlighted in one of the slides, where we talked about the unintended consequences, you mentioned, of limiting the total number of short term rentals, that that was no longer recommended. I saw that in one of the slides. Am I capturing that right?
Not quite. We never proposed to do that. And I just brought it up because people ask about it. The commission has never asked for that as a whole. I know you discussed it a little bit, but that's not really a change in our path. We just wanted to be clear that where, where that was in the beginning and that it's just carried all the way through because it's something that interests the public and the operators.
So if, and again, I'm not, I'm not at the point of having an opinion about this. I want to hear from the public and from my colleagues. But in theory, that means that like we, if we significantly underestimated the attractiveness of short term rentals as a side business, the way in sort of the soft form, in theory, we, all of the homes in our residential areas could say, hey, I want to do that for a while, that would be okay. I'm not saying that would happen, but in theory, the way the thing is drafted, that would be possible, right?
Yes, and it's true right now, too.
Okay. No, no, no other questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other, other, Commissioner Hernandez?
Thank you for the presentation, Joe and Jill. Hard to believe it's already been a year since we last covered this topic. Just a couple of points of clarification. Can you walk me through the thinking on code compliance? Are you saying that the property has to be up to current building codes? Current building standards, or does it just have to? I'm looking at the language here. Not have enforcement action. So being up to code and not having enforcement actions are two things. But let's say you may have an electrical issue with your house. Like, like help me understand something where your electric may not have GFI switches, for example. Would you still be able to do a short term rental in a situation like that?
So Joe, I'll go ahead and answer this. Ideally, yeah, we, we would want to make sure that all health and safety codes are addressed prior to having anybody rent. And that's for the benefit of the renter as well as the homeowner. So, and that's pretty standard. That's actually really standard across most cities is that if, especially if somebody is renting out a room out of their home and not out of like a, you know, in-law unit, not that out of their home and not out of like a, you know, in-law unit, not that we allow in ADUs especially. But out of their home, you want to make sure that if they're going to be running essentially, this is a home occupation where people will be coming and going. It, it really does come down to, you know, public safety and health. And that's pretty standard. So it's not that we would come through and do a like full inspection from top to bottom to dry rot to like gutting the place. It's really just addressing the areas that we see in the house and making sure that it is a safe environment for everybody. So yes, they would have to pass that prior to being able to rent out.
So I didn't get a clear answer. So there's some inspection that has to happen, but do you have a standard that you use when you're doing this type of inspection that you're operating against? Or is this, so my concern is historically, when we built our house here, there were issues around somebody applying one standard and then somebody else applying a different standard. I don't want us to be in a situation where one, it's unsafe and two, we have inconsistent standards being applied because then we can, somebody could say, oh, this person's being shown favoritism. You know, that, that's where I'm going with this, safety and then making sure that we're not showing favoritism.
Right, and no, I think that's a good point, too. I mean, because we do have a lot of homes that were built at a later time that were also built with a different building, building code standards. So it's a good conversation for us to have and to come back with to, to base on what the inspection standards will be consistently across the board.
Okay.
Ultimately, our main intent is just safety of all parties involved.
And with respect to compliance, is it code enforcement who's responsible for compliance? Like, like if, like what, what determines a strike in this policy? Like, like who, who is setting the standard? And again, if it's, if a police report's filed, does that count as a strike? Like, what are the criteria for a strike?
Well, it kind of goes into both. Ultimately, since we'll be the ones, the city would be the ones that are regulating these, you know, those regulations that we set out anyway. If there is a noise violation that goes beyond the hours of operation that gets reported back to us and an officer goes on site and does a, some sort of, you know, they write up something for it and they make a note for us or they have a report that they can report back to us. That could potentially go as a strike because it would essentially violate one of the ordinances that we've already laid out. But yeah, ultimately, it will come down to code enforcement. That if they violate any of the terms that we've laid out in these regulations, then we would be the ones that would act upon enforcement.
And what does the appeals process look like? Who does it go to and where does the appeal?
So we do have a rather large section of that towards the end of the, end of our ordinance. So the appeals process, it is, it is a process. I'm not sure if Sarah would like to speak on this. She'd be the best person to go with that.
Yes, sir. Hi, Commissioner Hernandez. The proposal that we have here is a rather robust appeal process. Open to discussion if this is the direction you want to go in. But what we've laid out here is that the initial revocation would be made by staff. There are the folks that would decide whether to either immediately suspend a registration because there's a health and safety hazard that needs to be immediately addressed or whether, whether they'll provide a notice of revocation, which would allow for sort of a process to happen at the staff level before the, the revocation is actually made. Once, once the registration is revoked, then the operator has a choice to appeal. And the way we proposed it here is that appeal would go to an independent hearing officer, not to the planning commission or city council. And that's pretty typical with short-term rental registration issues across the board. It's not, it's not generally something that sort of the elected officials or appointed officials deal with. It goes to an independent hearing officer. At that point, there's a hearing and there's an opportunity for the operator to present evidence. The independent hearing officer then makes the final decision. And that is the final decision. That can be, a lawsuit could be filed over that final decision, but there's not an opportunity to go to the, at a planning commission or city council. And that's the process we've laid out, but as I said, open for discussion or questions if you have them.
I will save my comments for discussion. Thank you. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Any other clarifying questions? Vice Chair Polgar.
Thank you for the presentation. That was really helpful. I just had a couple clarifying questions. One is, and this may be a silly one, but I just want to be clear that for the existing short-term rental operators, that six-month period, during that six-month period where they have the opportunity to register, that, that they're basically allowed to continue operating as they currently are operating during that period, whether or not they end up deciding. So, so if they decide, if they don't register or are not capable of meeting the requirements by the six-month deadline, then they have to stop operating after six months. Is that my understanding correct?
Yeah, I mean, until they've actually gone through the registration process, then they would just be operating as, as is, you know, prior to the adoption of this ordinance. So that's why we have that period for them to be able to get that registration in and then decide if they are or are not in compliance of the health and safety codes. But yes, ultimately.
Okay.
Until it's adopted.
Okay, great. And then the other question has to do with, there was a slide about the use permit exemptions. And basically it, it says, you know, the use will not be, it's, it sounds like it's a, it's a kind of a standard zoning code language that would apply for this use permit exemption. And so is it my understanding that basically unless the operator cannot make that case successfully, that it, that they, you know, they, unless they cannot show that they will not detriment, be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the property or improvements in said neighborhood. Unless they cannot do that, then essentially the planning commission kind of has to issue a, a use permit exemption. Is that my, am I understanding that correctly?
I'm going to defer to Jill on this one. She's a lot more.
Well, I'm deferring to Sarah. Sarah, I, I think we could both answer it, but I, I prefer you to start.
Yeah, I'm happy to. So for a use permit, the obligation is on the, the person seeking the permit to make an affirmative case. And so it is at the discretion of the planning commission to decide whether that case has been made. As you, as you note, though, this language is somewhat mushy and not the, you know, it's intended to apply to a lot of different circumstances. And so I think what Jill has provided earlier today is a suggestion that we could come up with more tailored findings for this particular situation, which might alleviate some of the concerns that I think Commissioner Polgar has raised.
Commissioner Polgar, Vice Chair Polgar, did you have more clarifying questions? No. Commissioner Goran?
Hi, hi. I have a couple of questions, though. So I understand the backing off on limiting the number of STRs and limiting the days per year because it's really so hard to enforce. But sort of, you know, the, the eight people that's the limit, I also don't see how that's really enforceable either. So I wanted to just get some, some sense of how that might be enforced because eight people are just the people who sleep there, they're not the people who visit. So, you know, the concern about a party house seems, seems pretty real. What's the, how would you enforce that?
I, I wonder is, is that, does staff treat that as a clarifying question or something that we ought to maybe take up in discussion?
I think, yeah, I think that's something that we should discuss. I, I think a lot of it comes down to, you know, good neighbor policy. And it is hard to enforce something like that, especially after hours. But I think a lot of it also kind of comes down to the, the platforms, the, the renting platforms, too, and our regulations and what they allow as well. But it is, it's a good discussion point. I think we could all try to figure out a way that that seems realistic.
Okay. So I don't know if this is a clarifying question either, but the six-month registration to me seems kind of excessive. I wanted to know.
Well, that's probably, Commissioner Goran, that's probably not a clarifying question.
I just wanted to know the thinking behind it. Like what, what's the, what's the process that requires six months?
I'd be happy to answer that one. So we'll, we'll focus on why, why we came out with that at the starting point. And on and off, there have been on the order of 100 short-term rentals in Hafen Bay. I don't know how many are going to all be operating at once and needing to be processed through the registration. We need, we're going to need to really amp up our focus on getting all of these folks registered and supporting our existing operators as well as anyone who's new. And that's a high volume for us. Have a lot of staff. It's also, it's an amount of time that, you know, there's a building inspection. Maybe it's going to take an operator a few months to make a few upgrades that are needed. There's, there's a number of other things that come into play with it, setting up the responsible party, the documents that we were looking for, et cetera. So there's quite a few things to do and it's the first time. And I think over time, it will be much easier to administer. But we just are trying to be realistic about what, how well we can serve our folks as applicants who, you know, this is, this is going to be a change, so.
If I could also add one other thing that needs to happen in that period with the current regulations is this proposes to impose a requirement on hosting platforms to require the city registration number to be listed and then to have a process for what's called notice and take down, which is basically if the city provides notice to the hosting platform that a listing is, you know, fraudulent or, you know, they're claiming to have a registration number when they don't, that sort of thing. That, that we have a system in place with the major platforms to be able to do that notice and take down. And based on my experiences, some other cities, it takes, it takes a number of months to get that in process.
Okay. I have one more question that actually is a clarifying question. And that is, if, if people are subletting a house, would they be able to, to use Airbnb because they're subletting for a year, two years of a, a year lease? Or would they be able to, to register and sublet? I mean, nightly?
We have actually addressed that in the code and we can dive into that a little bit more whenever we discuss it. But it does talk about if somebody is subletting, that they would have to receive the permission of the property owner and still adhere to the guidelines and restrictions.
So the property owner would be involved in the process?
Correct, because ultimately the property owner could be liable for pretty much everything.
Right, okay, thanks.
We'll discuss that a little further.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, Commissioner Goran?
I'm done.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Thanks for giving me another shot. So I really appreciate your comment, Sarah. I was going to ask about that, so you've made that, you obligated that for me. I also appreciated Commissioner Goran's question about the involvement of the property owner. To the extent that anything involves a coastal development permit, the owner of record is going to be on that permit, as I understand it. So I would expect there to be a high level of engagement there. I, it's been a couple of days since I read the, the draft ordinance discussion. So Joe, maybe I can just, you can walk me through a couple of corner cases so I can understand how the ordinance would address them or how we envision the ordinance should, should adapt to address them. Suppose that the house houses so many people, but, you know, one of the cars is a camper, maybe another one is an RV. And so we've got a couple of people sleeping in the driveway in addition, or on the street in addition to the people that are in the house. You know, do we think we've tightened the ordinance enough that we're not creating, we're not inviting some work at the edges of the, of the letter of the law that can accommodate the kind that, I would consider something like that to be a bit abusive, to be candid.
No, I totally understand that and I, I would agree with you. I think this is also a thing open for discussion. But ultimately, no matter who is going to be renting there, they're going to have to adhere to our own municipal code, you know, ordinances. And ultimately, we wouldn't allow for anybody on the street or in a driveway in the camper to be staying there, even.
So that's what our, that's the draft language, it says that.
I, I, we, we can look at that and dive into that a little bit more. But, but ultimately, you know, in our language, we do reference that they need to adhere to city ordinances and regulations, which.
So to clarify, I just want to clarify. So there's already codes and regulations that address that. And they're not specifically in the short-term rental draft language that we brought to you, but it refers out to those. So that, that is, that doesn't get lost.
Okay, we'll definitely want to pick up that thread if I space out because that is certainly an issue independently of short-term rentals, especially in the areas near the coast. Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Just to follow up on that last point, is there a requirement that the rules and regulations that are applicable for the short-term rental be posted on site and be written in clear language?
Yes, we do have that written into our, just our, our standards for hosting. For, for basically hosters, they're going to have to have a manual that will explain all of our regulations along with the regulations of their hosting platform. Ultimately, yes, it has to be available, it has to be visible and every one of them, in order to be, their registration to be approved, will have to have that, yes.
Very good. And explain to me the thinking around the prime, why is it, why do you need three years for somebody to comply with the primary residence rule? Can you explain the thinking or the logic that went into that?
I'm going to share with you where, where we came, came into that. That's quite a bit of time. And we just wanted to bring forward something as a starting point. Our staff would not recommend any more time than that, that, that was sort of at the outside of it. The thinking around that is that it could be quite a bit of time relative to COVID before folks can get up and running again and start to be able to actually make the adjustment from being primary resident or not primary residents to having a primary residence and/or to seeking a use permit. And we would, we would suggest one to three years, somewhere, somewhere in that range, but no more. We were concerned about making it shorter than that. And I think your public comment will inform your thinking about that, too. I think I'm seeing quite a few folks in, in your audience who I think will have really helpful comments about that. But that, that was why a use permit also takes several months to process. And so, you know, we, we want to be mindful of that as well. And it, it would all be happening concurrently with an initial effort to register all of these short-term rentals in the first place. So that said, it is one of the foundations of this, this ordinance, this approach to dealing with the tension of supporting coastal access and flexibility as well as protecting neighborhood integrity. And if three years is too long, we, as I think we put in the memo to you, you know, certainly this is, this is something we expect discussion to be about tonight. You already have written public comments about it. And so we just look forward to to hearing that.
Thank you, no further questions.
Joe, I wonder if I could ask you a question about the parking arithmetic, just to be sure I understand it. So a four bedroom unit would qualify for three vehicles allowed. One and a half would have to be on parking for that on on property, but the half would be rounded down. So they'd be required to provide parking for one vehicle? Is that correct?
That is correct, and Joe's, I think, done some math on a few of these. We were noticing that the the rounding up and the rounding down is a little bit challenging for really small rentals versus big ones. And our intent was to get to get half. If you're feeling like that isn't enough, you could just set a floor of, for example, one for a one bedroom and then two and three bedrooms could be two, and, you know, something like that. This is, it's a starting point and we were trying to provide some scaling. There's a lot of different ways to do it. We do recommend, though, that off-street parking be a requirement in the ordinance. And so that's, that's what I was there.
Understood, good. Are there any more clarifying questions from the commissioners? Vice Chair Pulgar.
Thank you. I just had one, one quick one and then another question might need some clarification. One is I, my audio clicked out when you said how many short term rentals are currently under in operation?
I can answer this. As of right now, we only have around 40 to 45 that are active that we're aware of. But at any given time, pre-COVID, we've had up to almost 100. So it can, you know, it can fluctuate.
Thank you. Sorry, my audio clicked out and I missed that key piece of information I wanted. And then the other question has to do with, I didn't understand if there are any with the, with the enforcement and the, if there's fines or, for instance, at the end of the appeals process, there's the independent arbitra- I'm not sure what the person's called, but the, the person who's independently pulled in to arbitrate the last, you know, step of the appeals process, who pays for that? Is that like, because I, I, you know, with the numbers that we're talking about, I'm just wondering kind of what, what it means in terms of costs and kind of where that comes from. And, and, you know, if there are fines for, to cover costs, for instance, for repeat offenders or things like that. I didn't see anything about that, so I just was wondering if that's part of this.
Joe, do you want to handle or do you want me to?
You can, if you like, I'm good either way.
So the, the way that this is currently set up is it relies primarily on the registration as the key enforcement mechanism. And this is an approach that I, that has been successful for multiple cities. Basically, it can be difficult to truly enforce a code violation and secure fines and that sort of thing to get to the endpoint of getting the owner to come into compliance. What we found is using a registration system allows for you to use that registration system as the lever. And essentially, you have a registration system, if someone violates it, you pull their registration. And then any further operation is out of compliance with the code and you revert back out to your standard code, code enforcement language, which in that you can impose fines and it sort of reverts back out to just the standard way that the city handles code enforcement. But again, this is a suggested approach. We are open to feedback and hearing comments from the commission and from the public. And as to your question, I also want to add on the cost of the appeal, that's something we can look into. I don't think that we spelled that out clearly here and I, if I'm hearing it, would love to hear more on thoughts about whether that should be something that, you know, we could seek to recover if that's desired.
Through the chair, I have one more follow up question after all.
Yes, please, go ahead.
In looking at who, what party is responsible for paying transient occupancy taxes? Is it the hosting platform or the individual?
The way that this is, this will work is with certain hosting platforms, the city has a voluntary collection agreement in place, namely Airbnb, and for those, I, the, the TOT would come through the hosting platform. Other jurisdictions have tried and struggled to enforce a collection requirement on the other hosting platforms that aren't willing to enter into voluntary collection agreements. Those efforts have not largely been successful. And so when operators are using other platforms, it is the operator's responsibility to collect a TOT, which is paid by the, the guest, but collected by the operator and then remitted to the city. As I said, some other jurisdictions have tried to code for requirements on hosting platforms to get TOT to be collected. There's been a lot of litigation, a lot of non-compliance, and it's not my recommendation at this time for Hafn Bay to go down that route.
Okay, understood, and just, so i- if I could just double click on that. So if you have an individual who doesn't pay the taxes, then we could revoke their registration and then other code enforcement goes into effect.
That's correct.
And do we envision any kind of penalties, I mean, like financial penalties for people who flaunt these rules?
Yes, so that's when we would have the city's standard penalties come into effect. I'm gonna look them up so we have access to them, unless, Joe, you know them off the top of your head, the fine schedule?
I, I believe it would be similar to operating a business without a license. That would be one of the first ones, which typically it ends up, yeah, you do accumulate penalties. I believe it's like $100 for the first one, 200 for the second, and then can go up to 1,000 from there on and it could be a misdemeanor and could, could, you know, result in a whole lot more legal issues.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Gorn?
So I'm sure I'm missing something, but, you know, you look at Airbnb, that's only one of the sites. There's 117 listings today, so that's, that's different from 40. And, and that's just one site, so what am I missing? Because obviously you've looked into it and you know what you're talking about. Could you just explain, please?
So we'll, we'll go check that out, but it, it could be the, that it's not just within the city limits. And so there are a lot of short term rentals on the mid-coast that have Hafn Bay addresses. So, well, we can, we can give that a look.
Thank you, just curious.
Are there any further clarifying questions from any commissioners? I don't see any hands.
Through the chair, there, if you don't mind, I, I was hoping that Sarah could, Sarah Clark could share a little bit more about what happens with revocation and, and operators for the particular site, but, but generally operating in the city, I think it's really important.
Yeah, one of the things that the code proposes is that if you are an operator and you have your registration revoked, it serves as a permanent ban on your ability to operate in the city. And the reason for this is that, you know, as, as much as we've tried to make the revocation process streamlined and to be able to use it as a tool, in practice, the revocation usually only happens for the most egregious offenders. And we want to make sure that once the city has gone through that process, the person doesn't just pop up at some other, you know, new purchase location and we have to go through the same thing again, which is something that has happened in a number of jurisdictions. And so there's a requirement for sort of a permanent ban on the operator. For properties, there's a, a year long ban on a new registration on the same property. But knowing that properties can change hands, we didn't feel it was appropriate to have a permanent ban tied to a geographic location.
Thank you, Sarah. Guess I should ask if that inspires any further clarifying questions from the commissioners?
Through the chair, it, you know, there are plenty of questions that remain, but I'm anxious to hear from the public. They've been awfully patient.
Yes, yes. Well, with, if there's no objection, let's open the public hearing and ask Bridgette to play air traffic controller there.
Looks like we have several people for, first one we have is Susan Sawyer.
Welcome, Susan.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman Reddick and Planning Commission members. I appreciate the opportunity to provide comment. I applaud the effort that has gone into this. I know it's a heck of a lot of work and have had many conversations with Joe Butcher and Angela Eckes and really appreciate all that they have done here. Just a little bit of context, I live across the street from a short term rental property. I have been a landlord myself on many occasions. I'm well versed in understanding the, the current rental markets and real estate markets generally. My priority is to preserve the residential quality of our neighborhoods. We're a very tight knit neighborhood and the short term rental is disruptive to that kind of environment. So I appreciate that there's some mention of this within the land use program. I would have preferred Hafn Bay to adopt the same kind of guidelines that Manhattan Beach and Laguna Beach have with respect to prohibiting unhosed rentals of less than 30 days in beach communities. But in the absence of that, I appreciate the requirement for this being limited to primary residences only. Having said that, I strongly object to a three year grandfathering provision. I have looked at probably 20 to 30 ordinances of cities around California, and I don't see anything that approaches three years. I don't see any grandfathering provision that's longer than one year, including the requirement that these be primary residences. That's actually now quite a standard requirement in the ordinances that I'm seeing around the state of California. So I hope that Hafn Bay would consider tightening that up to perhaps a year. And having said that, we're not taking away the opportunity for those property owners to make money. Though this is a very hot rental market right now. And I'd be really shocked if somebody who has a nice property can't turn that into an attractive long term rental. So it's not because we're in a recession, it's not because that we're in economic decline. So the time is really not going to be any better than it is right now for a property owner to convert something from a short term rental to a long term rental if they're an investor owner, which is the case for a number of these properties. I'm just consulting my notes, I've provided some comments, but then I did a little bit more digging just to understand how other cities operate. It seems to me that the fines that Hafn Bay is considering are actually quite light relative to other cities. So you might want to take a look at the kinds of fines that are being imposed for sort of repeat offenders. And I, I would ask for you to think about adding more definition to special events because I don't think it's enough simply to talk about weddings or corporate events because there are a lot of events that seem to fall between the lines. So what do you do about a yoga retreat? What are you doing about a bachelor party? What kind of family reunions are permitted? So in, in my neighborhood, I have seen firsthand, you know, 20 or more individuals in, in a location, and that seems quite unacceptable and with 10 or more cars that spill out all over the, all over the street. And I would ask that you require these properties to conform with state and county health and safety guidelines because what I saw is that when we have the shelter in place guidelines, these were still operating. They should, should not have been operating and there was no mechanism to actually enforce the fact that they should be shut down. So I'll, I'll leave it there. That was a lot to try and squeeze in in my time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And I, I should have said that because we do have a lot of folks who want to comment tonight, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Bridgette, who's, who's next?
We have Ray Olson.
Welcome, Mr. Olson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thanks for the time. I'll try to be brief. So first off, I completely concur with Susan's statements. Wholeheartedly, she is spot on. So last year, from April through all of the summer, my next door neighbor had a short term rental where there was at least 12 people in the property every weekend for, I'd like to say, nine weeks. It was insane. So first I want to know if it's a property that is non-primary residence, is there a limit, a max number of days limit per year if it's non-primary residence? That's what I'd like to know. For primary residents, I saw that it's 90 days. And why is it 90 days? That's arbitrary. So I think that it should be like Santa Cruz, 30 days. And if it's not that way, I think you need to take it up for the city to vote. So you must understand the survey. For people responding to the survey, if they are financially motivated, they will respond to the survey. If it's not in my backyard, it's not actually my neighbor that is a short term row, they're not going to respond to the survey. So I think the survey is completely biased. Second, you speak about enforcement. There are ways to make enforcement. There are third party businesses that are out there that many cities such as Manhattan and Del Mar use to enforce the regulations. So I don't think that's actually an issue. We can have, and they're monetarily incented to make sure they're enforcing and applying fines to operators. You must understand that when you speak of operators, you really are saying merchants. And so in a residential zone, there should not be merchants. And so I ha- I take I take offense to the fact that all of myers now turn up and rent their home for $1,000 a night and make so much money that they can afford to live in an apartment and still make money. So I think by default, we should consider short term rentals are by default not allowed unless the city wants to allow it, meaning that every homeowner and resident would approve that. What's happened in the last 10 years is it's all gone under the wire. Airbnb and the others are able to do this without really any like friction from residents until the last three years. And now it's shown. So I really want you to consider putting limitations on the number of days per year, making sure that if it's a primary residence, if somebody is living there, that that means that the whole home should not be rented out. If they're living there, that means they're using the kitchen and the bathroom and whatnot. So if it's a primary resident, we should have some language that says, okay, up to two rooms, three rooms, you guys think about it. With the max of two per, per room, six persons max, there should be that language. And again, enforcement is solved. There are other businesses that can do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we have Mike Ferrera.
Welcome, former mayor Mike Ferrera.
There you are. Can you hear us, Mike?
Yes. I do not disagree with any of the comments in the prior, and I thought the commissioners asked some very good questions. I have, I'll just try to have a few of my own, which is that.
I have, I'll just try to have a few of my own, which is that I thought the comment letter from the Coastal Commission was much more permissive toward the idea of the city exercising controls in this area than say we used to get from Peter Douglas. So I think it was a very understanding tone that there are many issues that would drive the city to want to control this now. You have a lot of single-family houses here, a lot of housing that falls into the zoning categories that you mentioned. Urban reserve doesn't seem to me like a very good one for this kind of thing. And once again, we have the PUD thing. And it's been 20 years since I lived in Ocean Colony, but that place is really different, and there has been controversy out there over short-term rentals. And then, of course, there's just the numbers. I, I'm going to guess that there's probably 3,000 or so homes that would fall into the permitted category. So I think it would be very much in the city's interest to constrain the total number of these Airbnbs that would operate at any given time. Mainly because I'm, I'm a little bit fixated on legislation the past last year that would have given every lot owner the ministerial right to subdivide into four lots. It actually passed both houses in the legislature and just didn't make it to the governor's desk. And it's back this year and supported by the Pro Tem and the Senate. And that's a math problem for the future. I also think that, as mentioned with someone else, that COVID does not seem like a good time to be inviting visitors into your neighborhood or lots of visitors or people that you don't know, or eight people per house, that we should wait for that to abate before we enact enabling legislation or encouraging legislation. So that'll do it for me. And once again, thank you for all your work and for your questions. Thank you, Mike.
Next, we have Tim Pond.
Welcome, Mr. Pond.
Good evening, Planning Commission. How I hope you all are well. I used to host Airbnb. Of course, I've stopped since the pandemic and some thoughts of this that I have are, this is, this is, of course, a affordable housing issue, because this does, this does make housing affordable to people around here. I have a daughter in college and she came, she comes home occasionally and I would rent out when she wasn't around. And so there, there are some situations that come up where you have your house open or a piece of your house that you can rent out, and it really, it helped me with affording to live in this area. I, I don't know if Joe can tell us, but I don't, I, I understand there's a big distinction between the hosted, for me, the hosted Airbnbs and the unhosted ones. I don't know, at last crossing, I think it was in January, there were absolutely no complaints from people that had hosted Airbnbs in Half Moon Bay, zero. So you're regulate, and then the hordes that are coming to take over the town, it never really happened. I mean, people have been Airbnb-ing for a long time now, so I don't think you're going to see this huge massive increase. In my neighborhood down here in Alse's Lorraine, we have two people that do it, and I don't think anybody in the neighborhood cares about them. They're all well under control. And I, I just hate to see a lot of city and staff resources put into this. This seems like a huge undertaking for city staff, and I think that you're probably short on money now because your TOT was probably a big portion of your money coming in, and that's dropped off considerably. And I, I don't know how short. I still see Ben taking Fridays off and other people taking Fridays off, and it's taking a while to get planning up. You guys have been doing a great job at the planning department, by the way, in terms of processing applications, because I do design work. But I mean, the, but I, I just see as a huge amount of regulation, much of it for a problem that doesn't exist. And I don't even know, I can see with the unhosted ones, there are problems. There is a house around the street and I've seen the cars there, and I understand the frustration, and if it was happening in my neighborhood, I'd be mad too. But the existing ordinances also cover this kind of activity. The noise ordinance doesn't, is, it covers some of my neighbors which are loud, which never get, you know, complaints, and people that run up and down the street at night, the, the noise ordinance itself covers a lot of this behavior. And yet, it's rarely enforced. So the county, the county, I think, does a good job with the way they do it, and I, I just, I think the city should just approach that. But again, I think the unhosted are a problem. You know, I would like to take off for a while and go to Europe and rent my house out for a month or two, and I think that's in the books here. I couldn't really understand all the language, but thank you again for looking at this problem.
Thank you for your input, Tim.
Okay, next, we have Matthew DeTome.
Welcome, Mr. DeTome.
There you go. You should be able to talk, Matthew.
I'm sorry. I think I was on, hadn't set my permissions properly. Thank you, Chairman Reddick and staff. I think you can hear me now.
Yes.
I got a smile anyway. You know, I'm, Susan and Ray, I want to apologize to you guys for what you're experiencing. And I, and I think that living next to a unhosted party house is reprehensible. My sister moved here five, 15 years ago as a teacher. I moved here 10 years ago. My mom moved here eight years ago. This is our new home, and I think part of the reason that we make this our home is because of that fabric of the neighborhood that we speak about. But it's also expensive. You know, I augment my income by Airbnb-ing a part of my house that's allowed my wife to not work. It's allowed her to focus on my son's education and helping us with other family matters as my job is intense. I think there's many teachers and other community members here that augment their income through renting part of their house. Right now, I think I can answer one of the commissioners' questions. There are about 50 Airbnb rentals right now in the city of Half Moon Bay. There's about 96 when you include El Granada, you include Princeton Harbor, you include some of the unincorporated areas of the San Mateo County. So as less than 1% of housing, and that includes places like mine, which are a part of my house, so it's not my full house. I'm, I'm not sure we have a problem, and this really looks like a solution looking for a problem. As I've said, there's an incredible amount of money and resources that went into drafting this ordinance and the research and the surveys, and we're not done yet. There's going to be a lot more time spent doing this. The party houses have to be handled. We have a few bad operators that have to be regulated, revoke their permits, slap red tags on their houses. We know who they are, you know, is this being done? And if not, why don't we? Why aren't we slapping red tags? Why aren't we doing code enforcement on the multiple, that party house in, you know, across from Kelly that has 14 places that advertises on Airbnb? That guy lives in San Mateo. Why aren't we, why aren't we doing active enforcement on those places now? Instead of trying to regulate and build a, a process around a problem that is maybe five or six houses. And again, I want to apologize to Ray. I, I hear the emotion in your voice, Ray, about that house. That's a party house. Let's stop that house. Let's not, you know, let's not knock people like Tim and myself and our other neighbors that are doing this responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Next, we have Richard Lottie.
Welcome, Mr. Lottie.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to join this conversation. I'm a member of the Board of Directors at Ocean Colony. And we've reviewed the documents you provided us. We appreciate that, and we have some serious concerns with respect to the draft ordinance. As you know, Ocean Colony has some unique aspects. And it's a gated community with two major hotels as our only neighbors. And frankly, back in the 70s when it was laid out, it was not designed for this type of usage. As Jill pointed out earlier, we do have about seven unhosted operating the Airbnbs at this time. In 19, in 2019, we went through an extensive effort, much like you're going through now. And the association passed a moratorium on STRs, limiting the number to the, those that were in existence. And we tried to put some guidelines around it, not nearly as many as you've constructed, which I applaud you for. And it was, the feedback was primarily due to homeowner concerns about security and home valuations. Most of our homes are three-to-four-bedroom homes, but our streets are only 24 feet wide and will not accommodate street parking. So when we have an unhosted party and six, eight, or 10 cars strewn across the park, the driveway and the street, it clearly creates a safety hazard for us. I would also add that here in the colony, our homeowners are responsible for funding the maintenance of our roads, our sewer supply system, and our water supply system. So additional loading in the colony would definitely have a financial impact on our owners. We have 580 homeowners and nearly 1,400 residents here who almost unanimously supported our moratorium in 2019. The association is happy to provide you with written comments within about 10 business days that would more broadly respond to some of the details in the ordinance. Appreciate your time tonight, and I understand this is a difficult challenge for the commission to deal with. But we certainly have our concerns here in Ocean Colony.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lottie. We appreciate those comments.
All right, next, we have Susanna Salin. Sorry, apologize for chopping up last names this evening.
Welcome, Ms. Salin.
Can you hear me? Great, like you can hear me. Thank you so much. So I was invited to make a few just comments. So I am a mom. I live on the peninsula. My parents are aging. They're in their 80s. My father's dream is to spend more time on the coast, and we're looking to purchase a small house in Half Moon Bay, El Granada, Moss Beach, or Montara, and hopefully in the next few months. So I just want to, I hope, I, I'm just new to all this, and I'm just trying to digest everything that's happened tonight, and I haven't seen all the documents, but I just hope you'll keep into consideration other scenarios. I understand the idea of having people that consider short-term rentals or do short-term rentals to have it as their primary residence. But for our situation, you know, a lot of people have family houses, so I'm looking to purchase a property that my parents can spend a lot of time in. My kids, when they graduate college, can come back to, so like a family house, but it won't be a primary residence. I do want to say that if you have that three years to convert to a primary residence, I do appreciate that idea of giving people time. But I guess, back to what somebody else said too, it's very expensive to live in the Bay Area. And I think allowing some part-time or occasional Airbnb business makes sense to allow people to live in the Bay Area. But just take, take into consideration this kind of option of somebody having a family house that maybe isn't their primary residence that they occasionally need to do Airbnb for. So I don't know if I've made this really complicated, but I just was invited to come tonight and share this sort of alternative idea of, you know, a lot of people have Tahoe houses where they, their family uses it, their friends use it. It's not their primary residence, and maybe they do need to Airbnb it occasionally. So I'm looking at maybe just 20, probably less than 20% of the time doing Airbnb and a small house for two to four people to rent occasionally. And I have a lot of questions, but I will probably call the office and ask them tomorrow or the next day. I don't want to take up any more time, but I just wanted to share these ideas with you.
Well, thank you for being here, and thank you for your comments.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do we have more members of the public wanting to comment, Brid?
Going once, going twice. I have no one that's raising their hand, so I think we're wrapping up.
All righty. Does, does, does staff want to comment on any of the issues raised in public comment, or should we go directly to commissioners' discussion?
Thank you, Chair Reddick. Staff would like to respond, because we're not in the EOC together and sharing notepads and coordinated, we would actually respectfully request a break so that we can do that in our virtual format if this is an appropriate time in, in your meeting to do so. I think we need about 10 minutes. That be all right?
Yes, of course. It's probably pretty good timing, so.
All right.
And return at 9:02.
Okay.
I'd like to do officially close the public hearing 10 minutes ago, so let me do that now and turn it over to Joe.
Thank you, Chair Reddick. Yeah, I'm going to address just a couple of the, the questions and concerns that we had throughout this. One of the things that was asked was about the urgency of this, and maybe going too quickly and bringing it back to the commission after we you know, visited the study session. The reason why there is a little sense of urgency is one of the calls I'm getting on a pretty daily basis is from realtors and interested buyers who are interested in buying homes in Half Moon Bay specifically to use it just as Airbnbs and vacation rentals and not as a primary residence. So without us having this regulation, it does kind of put us in a position where maybe we do need to move a little bit on this if the overall consensus is we don't want this to become a if the overall consensus is we don't want this to become a rental vacation, you know, community. Enforcement, you know, we had a question about enforcement with party houses and what's going on right now. Without us having an ordinance in place, it's really difficult to enforce anything without any sort of registration on file for short-term rental. So the only enforcement that we could do would be based off of just general public nuisances. Moving from there, somebody spoke, I'm not sure who, and I'm sorry, about primary residences being limited to 90 days. And we, we never really lined that out and that wasn't lined out in our draft ordinance here. We actually were, there, there wasn't a time associated with primary residency. Essentially, primary residency would mean that it would take up more than half of a year. So I, I'm not sure where the 90 days, it sounds like maybe it was just mixed up with the use permit potentially for 90 days. I'm not sure. So I just wanted to clarify that. To one of our speakers that had a question about complaints regarding hosted Airbnbs and short-term rentals, we actually don't receive complaints on hosted. And that's why we don't have a limit suggested for any nights for Airbnb if it's hosted. Because again, that's somebody's on site, typically the property owner, and any problems will be mitigated right away. So there, there wouldn't be really any regulations of posted as far as, you know, nights for a year. Let me see, I think I got one more here. No, I, I think, yeah, I think that's all on, on that I've got. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah. I think she can address a few more questions. And I'm happy to take any more questions after we've addressed these.
So I wanted to address the comments we got from the public about Ocean Colony in particular. And we're aware that there is an existing HOA imposed moratorium on new short-term rentals as well as existing regulations. We wanted to make clear that there is not intent through this ordinance to override that HOA moratorium. Certainly Ocean Colony or other HOAs could continue to control short-term rental uses in their areas as long as that's deemed consistent with the coastal act. And to the extent that there are stricter requirements that the HOA imposes on short-term rentals, again, our ordinance is not going to loosen those up in any way. For those existing short-term rentals in Ocean Colony, we did hear that they're frequently whole house rentals and therefore may not meet the primary residence requirement that is currently being suggested. But for that, it's a part of why the city has proposed the use permit avenue for such uses where folks could ultimately be allowed to operate without a primary residence on site so long as they, they come in and seek that additional discretionary use permit. And then with that, I'll turn it over to Jill to address one last item.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. Yeah, a couple of speakers brought up COVID and of course that we, we presented about it as well with respect to really thinking that this is a use that's going to get a lot of pressure regardless of having an ordinance or not. Short-term rentals are popular and do well in Half Moon Bay. Unfortunately, some of them have not followed the health order. We have actually enforced when we can on them and it's, it's a challenge. So the idea of bringing this forward now is not intended to encourage a whole lot of short-term rental activity contrary to any public health order. It would be perfectly fine, as one of our speakers suggested, that our ordinance acknowledge other agencies restrictions on these. Whether we acknowledge them or not, those restrictions are in place. And so having units for short-term rental be registered with a responsible party and a commitment and agreement about performance standards. And these various regulations will actually, from our perspective, make it much easier to manage as kind of unforeseeable circumstance that we've been in, which is kind of an evolving array of health orders and restrictions. So this is not pushing it forward. It's, it's really giving tools. So we're, we're hopeful to kind of clear, clear out some of the clutter of the discussion and, and work with the commission on, on what we, we believe are some clear paths forward. But it's your, your turn, folks. I hope that answered most of your questions and we'll, we'll be taking notes and available to, to respond as you go along.
Very good. Well, well, thank you for the, the nimble pulling together of those answers. I think all of that is helpful. I think it's time for the planning commission to, to discuss this and see where, where we're at. I'm sorry, Commissioner Hernandez.
I'll see if I can start. So one of the challenges we have, have here is that sometimes we have to manage the lowest common denominator because we have a few bad apples. So, you know, the purpose of, that there are benefits to having short-term rentals in the community that we've heard. I, I do think that we need to, I'm supportive of a lot of the language that's in here. And I think that my biggest concern is for people who do whole house rentals. I really would like to see us have, one, a, some, some constraints on whole house rentals, like a 90-day rental, a limit for a whole house rental in a calendar year, maybe even less, maybe even 45 days for a whole house rental. I think that's from, from what I'm hearing from the community, from the conversations I've heard outside of this meeting and others, I think that that's the area that people want to crack down on and they're the most concerned about as a community. And I agree with that. I don't know if there have been no complaints about hosted events, but I do think that, you know, we, we might consider a 90-day penalty for hosted. I don't really have a strong opinion on that. I would, I do wonder if it's possible for people who are doing whole house rentals to post a bond, like a $2,000 bond or something significant, and they forfeit that if, if they are shut down just for the, the hazards. Because I do think we should raise the standards that people have to comply with. So that's something I'd be interested in hearing from city staff on. In terms of getting in compliance, I, I don't think it should be more than a year. I mean, a year is a long time for somebody to get into compliance for the, the grace period for people who are transitioning in. And then six months for getting people up to code, I think that's more than enough time. If you're running a business, you need to be a responsible party in six months, even, even with the city sometimes taking a little longer to get things done. That seems like a pretty reasonable time. I, I do, would like to see some kind of stiffer penalty for repeat offenders. $100 fine, $200 fine, when the average rental is about 270 to 500, 270 to 350 dollars a night. Doesn't seem like a very serious penalty for repeat offenders. So I do understand they can lose their registration, which is great. But again, I'm, I'm open to having stiffer penalties applied to people who are, especially operating these businesses without a license. I mean, that's the end of the day is you're going to have people who follow the rules. I do think we should have stiff penalties for homeowners who are creating a public nuisance through this type of activity. I noticed the county has, I think, a limit of four adult persons. And, and, you know, that might be a more reasonable standard for vacation rental. I mean, vacation rentals, you can pretty quickly get to quite a few adults. But again, we're operating neighborhoods here. I wonder if we couldn't get down to something more consistent with what the county's doing, which is four adults and then an unlimited number, the way I read it, an unlimited number of persons under 13 years old. I do like the two strikes rule, I think, in the calendar year. I think that's reasonable. I do like the setup that the city has from the appeals process and the enforcement process. I try to make sure that we actually have, have that funded. And then, you know, the parking exceptions are, or sorry, no parking exceptions is very important. The community is, you know, concerned about parking in neighborhoods. We do have a number of issues raised when we go through the planning process, especially for some of these smaller homes. I also wonder, oh, I'll leave it at that. Those are my, my views on all these things. And I'll turn it back to you, Commissioner. Chairman?
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Benjamin, please.
Okay, thank you, Chair Riddick. And I appreciate Commissioner Hernandez's comments and sensitivities. You know, when I, when I think about how this works, I, I try to look at the populations of people in Half Moon Bay and I sort of find myself segmenting them into three groups. The first group are kind of old timers who are, you know, have roots that have infiltrated into the neighborhood and they have a certain sense of cohesion. There are people who come into the neighborhood that are relatively new. And I define those loosely because sometimes people who are new can quickly sink roots. And sometimes people who have been around for a long time don't really have many roots. And then there's a third group, which is, I guess I'll, I'll use the pejorative profiteers, but I don't mean it quite as harshly as that sounds. And when we think about the, the potential impacts of short-term rentals and the need to mitigate them, I think we have to understand that these groups are going to experience the impacts of short-term rentals differently. And if you're in one of those groups and you're not conscious that another person from another group is experiencing it differently, it's going to be easy for them to discount another person's reaction. And consistent with Commissioner Hernandez's model of lowest common denominator, I would reflect, I would project that as, I want to understand the sensitivity on the most sensitive receptor. You know, the, the person whose view of the neighborhood is, is more easily disrupted. And I think we heard a couple of war stories today from people who I'm guessing would be in that category. I know people from a former short-term rental on my street who I'd say experienced, you know, subjected their neighbors to that kind of experience. So I understand where they're coming from. And as we work to craft our ordinance, my, my feedback to staff is to ask that we look at those sensitive receptors and design our ordinance to manage the impact on them rather than to the one who says, oh, great, I'm new here. Look, there's a new person. Maybe they'll want to, maybe my kids can play with their kids, you know? With respect to how to think about protecting the neighborhood integrity, which I think, and I'm going to go out on a limb here and say, I think there's consensus that that's what we're talking about trying to define. You know, it, I did try to compare it a little bit to the way we protect the integrity of neighborhoods from home occupations, because that's a model of another use that we see in home neighbor, in residential areas. This one's a little bit different from that, as I understand it, because it addresses the coastal commission coastal access goals. And so we want to be sure that we understand the, the demand for coastal access and are sure that the rentals that we are providing are addressing what the coastal commission memo that was provided to us, I think it was from 2016, maybe there was an update, I, I forget. But it talked about the idea that we were producing more affordable rentals. And I want to be sure that if we're looking at affordable rentals and we see a price, you know, on the Airbnb that says it's going to be this much per night to stay. And we compare that to the existing rooms in our hotels, particularly if they're unfilled. And the amenities are similar. Obviously, if the hotel is the studio and the house is a whole house, then the price doesn't tell the whole story. But I want to be sure that we are, that what we're doing is not, that we're actually implementing the idea of affordable housing, affordable coastal access in the way that we're thinking about this ordinance. And I understood that, you know, from the attachment to the original staff report. And I'll apologize for not having read carefully the comments that came in fairly late this afternoon. I will read them carefully and provide additional feedback. So my apologies for that. But in the, in the, in the staff report, we saw that there were a number of communities, notably Center Barbara, that took the position that to protect the integrity of neighborhoods, we're just going to out and out say no to short-term rentals. And the coastal commission rejected that change in their LCP. So I think it's important for the public and for my colleagues to recognize as they're drafting this, that zero impact is probably not a viable goal. We probably can't simply say no short-term rentals. It's too much impact for the sensitive receptors. But I do think that we, you know, the coastal commission gave wiggle room. And, you know, when people talked about their rejection was based on eliminating existing short-term rental opportunities. So I think we have a lot of flexibility in terms of how new short-term rental opportunities are developed without necessarily running afoul of the coastal commission's coastal access standards. With respect to parking, I want to be sure, I, I think I was clear about this sort of, what may sound like a nightmare scenario, but in fact did come to pass just five or six doors down from where I live, where we had a relatively small number of people staying in the house, but there was an RV parked in the driveway and a camper parked on the street. And, you know, if you cutted the number of people in the house to the letter of the law, they probably met the requirement. It is true that we have some limitations on people staying overnight in certain parts of town. But as you know, the nighttime permit parking program is only applied in limited areas. And anyone can get a permit to have, to overnight in, in that area. I think it's difficult for, it's difficult from, I, I personally have never seen the police department come out and tell somebody to leave the neighborhood because they were sleeping there. I'm not sure if that's a truancy issue. I, I'm interested. I don't pretend to be a lawyer, but it's hard for me to navigate the spaces. And I want to be sure if we can clarify it in the ordinance that we're not inviting that. There are certainly mobile homes for people who don't have another place to live. We're all familiar with the housing crisis and the ramifications for mobile homes that have appeared on streets in many parts of the Bay Area. Half Moon Bay has not been exempted from that. And the closer you are to the coast, the more likely you are to have experienced it. I'd like to speak to, maybe just to try to put some color on what I understood Commissioner Hernandez's concern about the total number of, actually, he didn't say that. This is a different thought. I apologize, Rick. I think that there's a kind of a logistics curve that describes the impact that Airbnbs or home occupations or any number of changes to a residential neighborhood has on a residentially zoned area. The first few don't make much of a difference. And then at some point in, in the process, And then at some point in, in the process, the, the relatively small demand that you have at the start begins to have an increase, right? And you get kind of close to as much impact as you can, sorry. And then everything's reflected, so my gestures aren't right. And then you sort of get close to the maximum impact you're going to have. And what I think, what I believe anyway, is that you know, if the, if the home actually had eight adults and some large number of kids, or even if it had six adults and some large number of kids, and they're out there to have a good time in their short term rental. That's going to be different than six people with kids and where they're living there every day and they got to go in and do homework and their chores. This is a different kind of experience. So I think that there's a potential for impact that I do not want to discount. And, you know, in a neighborhood that's full of young children, it might be undiscernible. In a neighborhood that's quiet, it might be very discernible. So again, a challenging area to try to assess the impact. And I think, I appreciate the comment that the HOAs have some flexibility. It's not the intent of the ordinance to trump restrictions that are addressed by HOA policies. For neighborhoods that happen to have an HOA, even if they haven't looked at one recently, it might create an opportunity independently of this ordinance. And something that neighbors may want to look at if they consider this a grave concern. When we were discussing hotels on, as part of the LCP update a few months ago, and we were analyzing the demand for water. I recall the observation that hotel resident, hotel visitors generally consume more water than households. And this is not to say that the addition of short term rentals is going to result in Happy Moon Bay not be, not having adequate water. But I want to be sure that we've incorporated the assumptions about how water is used by visitors as opposed to how water is used by residences in the way we are thinking about this. Just on the news tonight, I did see that Marin is actually announced that they're going to begin water rationing. Because we're only at like forty five percent or, you know, we're compounding low rainfall years right now. So I think it's important for us to be sure that our, our visitors, whether they're in hotels or they are in SDRs, are conscious of the demand for water, much as when we look in a hotel, we see signs that say, please limit your use. Think about the amount of water that's there. I don't know if that's had a meaningful effect, it sounds like we still use a lot more water. But that really falls, it's one illustration of a broader set of impacts that if you don't live in an area, you may not realize what the impact is that you're having. For example, you can see I've, I've taken, I've tried to honor Brian and Rick's example and used a background this year. This is, this is the Kehoe Water Course behind me and the beach. A user who may not be aware of the flammability in that area or the sensitive habitat in that area and in other areas in our town might easily damage it. So the question is more broadly, has to do with how, as we bring more people into environmentally sensitive habitats in places where they're demanding a great deal of, or the potential of demand, a great deal of resource that is not limitless. That we've done a good job of capturing how we manage the risks to our community associated with those kinds of, of uses. I concur with the comments about COVID, both those from the public and those that Jill made earlier. I should just note that in many cases, the COVID does, the COVID transmission doesn't necessarily go from the visitor to the home, it can go between visitors or it can go, there are COVID cases in our town. And it could easily run the other way. So having a good plan for managing that, along with the other kinds of disasters, making sure people know what a tsunami siren sounds like and what to do when you hear it. Knowing about fires, things like that, very important. And I would be interested in knowing how effective the city of Orinda was in addressing the concerns that fell out of a terrible shooting incident that occurred there a few years ago in conjunction with a short term rental. And to be sure that if there are safety issues that involve how firearms are accommodated, that are respectful of constitutional rights, but address public safety, that they have been addressed in our short term rental policies as well. So I think it's worth looking at the Orinda experience and being sure we have climbed their experience curve to avoid a very painful potential hazard. Most of the comments I heard from the public tonight reflected the tension between a, a resident and a business owner. In general, in systems analysis, when you're thinking about the metrics of the system, there's the transaction that, the, the point of view from the transaction that's going through the system and the point of view of the system. And if we adopt just one of those views, we're going to discount the other. And I want to be sure as we've thought, thought it through that we that we know how that's going to, how that's going to affect both of them. And I, I think the comments that I've heard require additional thought about that, I don't think we're there yet. I thought the comments about affordable housing in the public were interesting. You know, we have our affordable housing expert here tonight, experts, I count Jill as one of them. And, you know, my sense is that having a side business that allows you to afford a fairly expensive home isn't the typical definition of affordability. I, I can see how at a transaction point of view, it might feel like it. But I'm not sure that I would characterize those in the name of affordability. And that argument didn't, was not persuasive to me. I understood the Ocean Colony concerns about parking. And there, I appreciated that they had concerns about impacts in their area. But I don't think there's anything unique about them being gated or being on the coast or being adjacent to other hotels that makes the impacts qualitatively different than the way they'll be in other areas, except for the parking issue. And I think that is a big deal. So you've been, oh, and I, I appreciated the speaker who's, I think it was Mr. Olson, who pointed out the availability of independent enforcement. I don't know if any of you who have, have ever gotten a parking ticket in your life. But in the last ten years, every parking ticket I've gotten was not delivered to me by a, my windshield by a deputized peace officer from the municipality or the county. It was someone who's being paid to go around and issue tickets. And I'm not talking about you, Joe. So, you know, in terms of creating a workforce that can deal with issues of enforcement, the cost doesn't concern me, maybe it should, but it doesn't because I think there are resources out there who could probably self fund. That said, I think that, at least in my experience, the noise problem is not limited to short term rentals. I have, I know of instances actually have communicated with our community development director in some cases about cases where properties that are owned that, you know, definitely house some individuals were producing remarkable quantities of noise. And so I would say in general, that our approach to noise and other nuisance kinds of enforcement probably is a high priority subject with respect to the impacts on residential areas. The way our ordinance is written now, I don't think it's got the kind of teeth that it should. And this is an opportunity to explore the kinds of things that we, that we want our residential districts to reflect with respect to these things. So you've been incredibly patient with my long winded response. I should shut up and let my colleagues speak, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin, for your, your always thoughtful insights. Who else would like to comment? Vice Chair Polgar.
Thank you, Chair Riddick. So I would, actually, I would echo a lot of Commissioner Hernandez and Commissioner Benjamin's comments. There's a couple of things that, and I really appreciated the points about, for instance, the, I think Commissioner Hernandez spoke about having a grace period that's one year. I think that three years is too long in terms of establishing the residency for the existing short term rentals. So that was one I definitely agree with. And I do think that the, the fines are too light, in light, especially in light of what, how much per night many of these, the average cost is in terms of the short term rentals. Especially when you're talking about repeat offenders. You know, I just think that there, there's not enough of a, of kind of a, like a deterrence there. I realize that it's hard to enforce, but I still feel like those fines should be greater for this, in this respect. And kind of, I, I also really appreciated Commissioner Benjamin's comments about with respect to the Coastal Act. And really, is this affordable accommodation? You know, coastal for, for, you know, essentially fostering low cost coastal access and making it affordable. And I'm sure that there are, but I, I do think that it, you know, we shouldn't just assume that the short term rentals are more affordable than the existing hotel options, some of the hotel options. So I do think that's important. I appreciated the comments about how they're potentially considering at least that there might be greater water usage by visitors as opposed to residential users of the house if they're coming in for brief periods of time, there may just be a lot more water use associated with cleaning, you know, residents and preparing for the, each time there's a new visitor coming. And, and I do think it's an important consideration that with short term rentals, and we're already seeing this, but basically when you have visitors coming to the coast, our coastal areas, right now, the way they're directed to coastal access to our beaches is through very, kind of directed through public access areas that are designed to accommodate visitors. You know, we can always, there's always improvements, I'm sure there's issues and stuff, but I'm just saying like, they go to public parking, you know, they're directed to public accessways. And so once people are staying in residences sprinkled kind of throughout, you lose some of that wayfinding and perhaps some of the kind of orientation to the coast side and access out there. So it's, it's worthwhile considering because you, I think we'll see more and more of what we're already seeing, which is people kind of going any, any which way as opposed to perhaps being funneled into ways that are accessways down to the beach, for instance, that are meant to handle visitors reaching the beach, for instance. So that's, you know, or places where there's actually trash receptacles and things like that. So I just, those are important things to consider as we see more and more short term rentals. And, you know, it was interesting to hear, Joe, your comments are about that you're getting lots of calls from Realtors. You know, that to me says that, that it is important that we have an ordinance in place and we're really thoughtfully, we, we are prepared to handle this as best we can. But nothing, I'm sure we'll learn, lessons learned, I'm sure. But I just, I think it is really important. And I hear the comments from some of the, the public, members of the public about how the majority of the, the impacts are from a, you know, or complaints and such are from some of these like party houses. I, I definitely hear that, but I also hear that we don't have a way to really deal with that right now. So that to me says that we need something, we need an ordinance. And so I, I, I just don't see that we have those mechanisms right now. And so for me, a key thing about this ordinance is the, the primary residency being important. And, you know, I think that the, you know, and what points to this to me, for me, is I, I recall there was a comment about how, you know, I think, Joe, you mentioned that in terms of complaints, there really haven't been complaints from hosted short term rentals thus far. And so that to me is a key point because basically, if you have somebody who's living in that residence, who owns a place and is living in that residence for some period of time, or at least, you know, they're going to be, have a much higher incentive to be careful about how they use it as a short term rental. And so I think that that's just a really important part of what, how we implement this in this ordinance. And so I, I, you know, I really think that, for instance, I have a big issue with the use permit exemption. And here's why, because I think that, first of all, I think it'll be really tough for the planning commission to make determinations about when those should apply, when a use permit should apply. I mean, I heard from the, there was a member of the public who was talking about how they're interested in purchasing a property that would really be for mostly family, you know, a family gathering spot that they'd want to be able to use for Airbnb residence. It's not necessarily, they're not treating it as an investor, you know, might treat a property. But I, how, as a planning commissioner, am I going to make that call? I, I just, that's very tough for me. And then if we start, you know, okaying it by putting limitations, like days, you know, limits on days and stuff like that, I feel like we're just back at the same point of really tough things to enforce. You know, we're essentially, you know, putting ourselves back into, because that was one of the reasons for not having, you know, hosted, unhosted, not, you know, ninety days, thirty, all these different regulated. But then once you start doing issuing use permits, each one's different perhaps. And so then, and, and it just creates, we're kind of back to the burden being on the city to kind of enforce a variety of, like a very, you know, depending on city, you know, it's, each case is different, you know? And so I just really don't like it. I, I'll, I'll say that, I just, I feel like if you're going to say it, that it has to be a primary residence. And you're going to make that the requirement, make it the requirement. Because I feel like even with, like, we've done such a, but I'm so pleased with how we've clarified and improved our parking, you know, or, you know, requirements and such. And yet we still struggle with getting a lots of, of exceptions for, you know, you know, requests for exceptions on, you know, parking limits, you know, or requirements. And so I think about this one, I think everybody's going to apply for a use per, a use exemption or permit, you know? So I just have a huge issue with it, I really strongly recommend against doing something like this. I think it actually undermines a lot of the, kind of, the, the benefits that I think the staff has really thought carefully about what would be, at least based on their experience in this, you know, they have a lot of experience. What would be enforceable realistically? And I think that use permit exemption undermines a lot of that and doesn't help us achieve our goals of reducing the impacts to the, the neighborhoods, making sure that those aren't there. And then I would also really highlight that, you know, I think Ms. Sawyer, I think it was, had she, she, some, I, I really agreed with a lot of her comments. And one of her key points is that, you know, even for those who can't establish primary residency, if they're viewing, if this is an investing, you know, investor property kind of situation, it's not as if they, they no longer have an option for making a profit off of the property. Because a long term, there, there is a high demand and consistently for, for, it's not as if it's been, you know, this is a recent thing or, or goes, comes and goes consistently. There's been high demand for long term rental rentals in Happy Moon Bay. And so it's, it's, this is not a case of suddenly extinguishing their ability to use this as an investing, investment property. So that, that, that's really a key point for me. I also feel very strongly that the current definition of special events is too vague. It really basically is, you know, it has this, you know, light, like, kind of vague language of likely to result in violations of blah blah. And I think that is really up to interpretation. I don't right now have a language to recommend, but I could totally see where somebody I don't right now have a language to recommend, but I could totally see where somebody thinks that their yoga event is going to, you know, is, is not going to achieve, you know, cause those problems or issues. And so I, I do worry about that. And so I would like to see a better definition that's more explicit, basically, so that it's, it's harder to, doesn't leave as much up to interpretation on the part of the, the, the operator, but also those who are renting the, or, you know, doing the short-term rental. And then the other, I guess, and then the last thing I wanted to just point out is that I think that in the, currently in the code, or excuse me, the proposed ordinance, I found it a little, I found it confusing as to what the city can kind of impose or say, you know, kind of require of the hosting platforms. And I got the impression that it's not much. And so one of the things that concerns me is that, that really right now, all we say is that they have to put this, this, the registration number in their listing. And I, I'm wondering if, is it, do, basically, it, it's not clear to me that, you know, they would, that the, the operator really is required to make it clear at, in the, at the point of listing what the, the limitations are on parking. On, yeah, you're not allowed to actually park a, a big RV there or think, you know, like things that are practical that actually, you know, people are going to try to do. You know, no, the living room is not, you know, with a couple mats put down is not another bedroom. Or, you know, I, I just, I, I worried that like basically, once it's, once the place is booked, you're ending up like kind of, it's a harder path, like, I feel like that information should be at the hosting, listing site. And I don't know that we are, I don't know if we're able to require that or not. So maybe it's not, maybe it's not possible. Those are my thoughts. I did have one other question, clarifying question that I think is a really simple one to answer. There came up this question, I think that Mike Farrar, he mentioned that the urban rural, you, yeah, would it allow the short-term rentals? But I had thought that, that that, once it becomes rural coastal, is that what it's becoming? That, that, then it's just in this interim period that it might apply to that, those areas. Or maybe I'm, I misunderstood that. So that's just a clarifying question.
Thank you, Vice Chair Polgar. Commissioner Goran, do you, do you want the floor?
First of all, you guys are really good. The summary from Commissioner Hernandez and that, what Vice Chair Polgar had to say about limiting the investors, I think that's in, in focusing on this residence requirement is really important. That was, when I heard, that's sort of the number one to me, is this limiting investors coming in to, to just do this rather than have families make a little extra money. So I think that that residence requirement is very important. I also wondered, you know, Rick brought up this like limit of four plus the kids, and we talked about maybe six or eight or whatever. And I thought, oh, four seems low, eight seems high. But my question was, can't we limit the number of people in each house based on the primary residence and that the people who are in the house have to match the primary residence? Is that something that can be done? The people who currently live there, if there is a residence requirement, seems like that's the number of people who should be allowed to rent it. I also felt like the fines were too light. I mean, it was, I thought that that, what's her name, Suzanne Seur, was spot on about a lot of things, but that was the number one. When I looked at it, I hadn't seen it before. And those seem low. I also feel like the, the two strikes rule seems like it's really open to manipulation. I think if somebody doesn't like being Airbnb next to them, they could very easily lodge a complaint. And then, you know, even use that complaint to say, oh, if I, if you get one more, you're out of here, even if it's manufactured. So I have a little bit of a hard time with that. And I would want to kind of look at that a little bit more. But I also do see that that's a tool by staff to take action when they need to take action and not have to wait for three strikes. So I just thought I would raise it because I think that it's open to sort of playing the system. And same way, I actually don't have a hard time with the special events. I think that is kind of vague on purpose to give staff some room to say, well, that's a special event, sorry. And to enforce based on what they see rather than having to stick to individual things in the code that they couldn't predict. I think that is everything I have. Nice job, you guys. It's nice.
Thank you, Commissioner Goran. You'll no doubt have another chance if more things occur to you. I have a few comments to make. I guess first, I, I really like the way that the ordinance is anchored in the, in the, in the land use plan intent to, to make, to residential occupancy the continuing first priority in our, in our neighborhoods. And we, we heard from the public tonight, from a couple of folks who are short-term rental operators who have very good reputations, who are people who live here. And, and as, as one of them said, I think at a hearing that we had a year ago, you know, the, when people live here and operate short-term rentals, they, they have neighbors. I mean, they are neighbors with their neighbors and, and they're going to put their, the neighborhood first. And that's why we don't see the complaints from the, from the hosted unit. So I think that's, I think that's the sort of the foundation of this whole ordinance going forward is the primary residence clause. And those gentlemen who spoke, they, you know, they, they, I was somewhat sympathetic to their point of view that we're developing a process here and putting a huge amount of resources into a process that may be overkill, given the, the fact that a small number of, let's say, party houses are, are responsible for the vast majority of complaints. But and so as I say, I'm somewhat sympathetic to that, given that they are good operators. But I think that we definitely need this framework to go forward to deal with the future of short-term rentals. And as Jill said very articulately a little while ago, you've got to have this registration that requires the, the owner and operator to make a commitment to the performance standards and make a commitment to preserving the quality of our neighborhoods the way we need them to. So, so I, I I'm in favor of continuing on to, to make this ordinance what we need it to be. A couple of specifics, I think that it is good to be generous with a a grace period for people who need to get in conformance with the primary residence requirement. I guess I think that three years is a little too generous. Like it would seem to me that even in these unsettled times we're in, that I'd have to have it explained to me why someone couldn't affect that in two years. So I, I'm in favor of generosity, but two years to me seems quite generous. Excuse me. I'm in favor of the streamlining that staff has done with this, removing the limits on nights and numbers of short-term rentals. I think that we, if we focus on the primary residence requirement, that's going to give us what we need. As far as the, the special events language goes, it, it is a, it is a conundrum because, you know, you, you can, you can rightfully have a limit on the number of people who are going to sleep in the short-term rental that night. And a maximum of eight is, is, is good. I would not go higher than that. Eight adults plus their, plus their children. It wouldn't go higher than that. But, but that doesn't speak to the issue of what the use of the, of the place is perhaps during the afternoon and during the evening where, where there are cases where a much larger number of people congregate there and no doubt make a racket. And that, that probably is part of the problem with the so-called party houses, right? You, not necessarily all of those folks are, are sleeping there overnight, but they may well be partying, a large number of them partying in the evening. So, so an approach to special events and maybe even more broadly to the number of people who are on the property above and beyond the numbers who are sleeping there. There, that may have some appeal. I know it's, I know it's a difficult road to go down to say, well, we're going to pass a law that says how many people can be standing in this lawn or this driveway? Maybe the answer is just the, the noise and nuisance requirements, which may even exist today. Just get enforced. Maybe it doesn't need to be baked further into this ordinance. I am, I was distressed, the, the, the member of the public who spoke early tonight, who, who related that he'd been living next to a so-called party house. And last summer, it was, it was a very negative experience for him. I, I would have hoped that the city's existing ordinances would have given him some relief. And I don't know the details of the case, but I would ask that that even in the, even in the very short term, if staff could, could visit whether the existing ordinances before we even implement this can, can bring some relief to the neighbors who find themselves nuisanceed by, by these party houses. Vice Chair Polgar made a, a very cogent observation, I think. I've been struggling also with the concept of the use permits for exemptions to the primary residence clause. And I, I've struggled with it because I can't easily imagine a real-life case where the planning commission could look at it and say, oh yeah, well, they certainly deserve an exemption, but these guys, I don't know. So, so I, I tend to agree today with Vice Chair Polgar. I guess I would say that I'm open-minded if staff could educate me on what, on, on the realistic examples of why we, we might want to keep that flexibility open. Let's see. And I think the, the last thing I'd like to say is I'm, agree with my colleagues who've mentioned the, the, the hosting platforms and getting the Half Moon Bay specific regulations made prominent in those listings. I, I really don't know how it works with the hosting platforms, but maybe it is possible and desirable for our ordinance to require the operators to include those in their listings. Not necessarily require Airbnb to do it, but to require our, our local operators to do it in their listings. That's all I, I have at the moment. Are there, Commissioner Benjamin has his hand up. Please?
Yes, thank you. I just, I, I know this is a study session. We're not moving into a resolution. But I want to be sure for clarity that I have associated myself with the remarks of my colleagues since I spoke early and I appreciated the fact that they were supporting some of the things that I had mentioned. And I want to be sure that as staff is considering the way we are thinking about it, that it should be clear that these are not the isolated thoughts of one or two commissioners. I haven't heard a single commissioner disagree with any other commissioner about anything that they've said. Although there's some question about what should be the appropriate grace period. And I think I heard a lot of support for the value of the hosted visit. And I'm trying to understand from my colleagues whether they're saying that they generally prefer to avoid the unhosted altogether. Or whether they had a different idea that, that they don't like very much, but they, they are holding their nose and saying, okay, to something. So I'd like to, this is normally something I'd expect Jill to probably toss up and try to solicit comment. But it's an interesting question. I'm interested in my colleagues' way of thinking about it.
I'm happy to hop on that and provide some feedback. So I think the general framework, and I think the way I look at it from a city perspective is, you know, the city has to provide due process. And I think that there may be a good argument for people to, you know, to avoid litigation and to give people fair use of their property when other people are doing short-term rentals to let, you know, a homeowner to like, you know, hey, if you have an opportunity to rent out your house for two months or three months because you're going to go on a trip someplace, once in a lifetime opportunity, that, that's actually not a bad use, right? I mean, I think that that's something where, you know, that, that's a use case I could see myself taking advantage of at some point in, in the not-too-distant future, right? I don't do short-term rentals, haven't done them, but it is something I can see myself taking advantage of. So, so I think allowing some flexibility for a whole home rental on a short-term basis, I think, you know, I, I think that, that we should allow a little bit of flexibility there. But I do think that if you're operating a business, if you're using these websites who make a great deal of money off of these things, then we should put an obligation on the operator to follow the rules. And I think we should raise a burden. I, 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 I think we want to get people, I would, again, not super strong, but I do think a year permitting time for for getting, you know, a great, one-year grace period, I think is plenty of time for somebody who's operating a business to conform with the laws and the rules and the regulations that we're trying to put in place here. So that, that's my thought on short-term rental versus long-term rental. I think use cases, being in the world of software development, use cases are always good when we, when we talk about how we implement things. I think a couple of use cases to consider is what happens if you have, say, somebody who owns two houses in Half Moon Bay? They, they rent one home to somebody as a, as a long-term rental, they have a lease, and maybe they sublet a piece of their property as part of a short-term rental. I think that's an interesting use case to take a look at and just think about how that would affect somebody. Generally speaking, unless the city has some overwhelming, other than that use case where maybe you have some exceptions that just need to be thought through a little more carefully. I'm not a big fan of these exception use permits that you can apply for. I think we should just have simple set of rules or black and white. We don't need to have a bunch of people appealing to the planning commission and, you know, trying to strong-arm us into giving them a special permit. Because I do think it, maybe it, it creates some due process issues, but you know, maybe, maybe the reason why you're doing it is you're trying to give people due process. You're trying to give them an exception if the, the rules and regulations are too Kafkaesque, right? So we haven't envisioned everything. So I'm open to that, you know, having a use permit, but yeah, I gotta say, there's a burden as city staff, you'd have to cross for me to be really supportive of it and have to have some good justification because I think we should have simple, straightforward rules and everybody should follow them. And we should, again, going back to some of the complaints, let's make sure we were taking out the worst offenders. And, you know, again, I would, I will re-raise, nobody supported the idea, but I do think having something like a bond or something like that, that somebody has to put up, that they forfeit if they're doing whole-house rentals, you know, I think that's something worth considering, but I know there are issues with it. Anyway, hopefully I answered your questions, Jimmy. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Any other, Vice Chair Polgar?
Yeah, I, I actually, I'm not opposed to whole-house rentals, short-term rentals. I, I, I think that the key is the, for me was the primary, by having it I I I think that the key is the, for me, was the primary, by having it be a primary residence. Um, and then, you know, I I I do, uh, you know, the scenario that Commissioner Hernandez mentioned of, you know, you're going to be gone for a period of time and it's like you want to be able to it, you know, that will pay for if you're going on a trip, that, you know, being able to rent out your place um for, you know, a few weeks. And I think that's a good thing to offer that, to have that flexibility. And the primary residency requirement would still allow that. So that's that's where it's more about the kind of that, the, you know, by, again, having them have to have established that residency that's unless they're really, you know, not, they're actually, you know, flaunting the, you know, uh, the rules, they're not actually following the rules, then then it's, you know, otherwise that it that to me resolves a lot of my concerns. Um, so uh and then, you know, I I don't, the the bond for a whole-house rental, I don't know, I I'm not sure if that, I I think there's already to behold, the, because even on my understanding is that even if somebody only ever wanted to rent it out once on these, you know, the the Airbnb, it sounds like uh they would have to go through the registration process. So it's a it's a it's a heavy lift, um, you know, for that, uh, you know, in that case. So I don't know how I feel about the bond, but I will say that I wasn't opposed to, I I prefer that they're hosted. But I feel like that, again, is a very difficult, we we talked about how difficult that is to enforce and stuff like that. And so to me, the primary residency is like the best alternative um to that.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Gorn.
So um I am actually uh against limiting the hosted or unhosted. If, you know, if I'm going to stay in a place at Airbnb, I don't want somebody else there. And that's how a lot of people feel. And that's the real, like a one um sort of important part of being able to have that business, that side business. So I, to me, it's not really an issue. I think the um if we do have the um that the the sort of the family requirement, the um that that takes care of this using the property just as a money-making machine and sort of is sort of raising the the possibility of of problems. The the one other thing that I would also like to raise is that we've talked about COVID. And I know that you guys are thinking about COVID, but if we're in terms of the timing of things, if we're trying to get this done by June, sent to the Coast Commission by June and start signing people up, that sends a real message to people that they're encouraged to do this. And I know that it's very important to do it, and I know it's very important to to get that structure in place. I want to get that structure in place, but I would say as you do it, we need to be really clear about not encouraging spread of virus. Because it's not going to be over soon. So maybe by the end of the year, that'd be great. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Gorn. Those are really good questions that you commissioners have asked. And my my personal opinion is very much along the lines of this theme of keep it simple. I think if if we can enforce the primary residency requirement, somebody lives in that house for fifty point one percent of the year, then I think that's fine. I think that it'll take care of itself, then they'll have such a vested interest in their property and their neighborhood that they will behave the way they ought to. I see um I see the potential benefit of the idea of the bond, but I just fear that going in that road would be very unsimple and would complicate matters a lot. So so I I wouldn't wouldn't be crazy, I wouldn't be wildly enthusiastic about pursuing that. Commissioner Benjamin, do you you have your hand up for a new comment?
You're muted.
You're muted.
How prescient of you. I hadn't even raised my virtual hand yet. And oh, it was my physical hand, so. Very good. Okay, very good. Yeah, I I I just will say, um, I appreciate the sentiment. I also value, I I think there's a, we will eliminate a certain number of bad actors by enforcing a primary resident uh standard that can solve the problem in many cases. I will say that the example that occurred down the street from me involved a renter or a uh a homeowner who for whom this was a primary residence. So I want you to go in with your eyes wide open, colleagues, and understand that that alone is not sufficient. There are counterexamples. And um, you know, in the particular case I'm thinking of, there was incursion um into habitat, there were fireworks. There was uh trash left out, um, you know, open, there were the RVs. Um, and it was unpoliced because there was no host. And uh so I it 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 sounds so appealing, and yet I can tell you it doesn't work. So be conscious that there needs to be some additional thinking about that. I'm being existential with my counterexample. I hope that gives you pause.
Yeah, it's a it's a it's a good point. I I don't know if it's germane or not, but hypothetically, those could have been friends and relations of the homeowner given use of the thing rather than it being a short-term rental issue, right?
Well, in this case, I know it was a short-term rental. It was a weekend.
But anyway, my
there's no question about that. I actually knocked on the door and cleaned up their trash in time for the got the stuff the raccoons had pulled out back in their can in time for the garbage truck coming down the street. But, you know, it's real. When it's unhosted, it's real.
Well, good for you doing that. I I guess my my point was to was to be um one would hope that the existing city ordinances, separate from what we're talking about tonight, would provide some uh some uh follow-up and 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 penalties for people involved in those kinds of violations.
Yeah, it would just be, uh, it would, you know, I could s- I could see how you want that kind of thing, but for a short-term rental person who's staying there without anybody there, which I agree with Commissioner Gorn is a desirable. You know, if I were the consumer, that's how I might want to do it in some cases, not all cases, but in some cases. I just, it wouldn't occur to me, you know, I wouldn't know when the garbage was being picked up. I wouldn't know that there were raccoons because I wouldn't have known that there was a habitat that raccoons would emerge from the the area to consume the garbage. I just, I wouldn't think about those things. And um so there's an infrastructure of of thinking that will not be solved simply by saying that the home is the primary residence of the of the uh person who's uh operating the uh the short-term rental. That's my, that's my thesis. If it's solved by the rest of the ordinance, great. There needs to be some way to communicate that and hold ensure that the consequences are manifest in the way the thing is rented, that it actually achieves what you want.
Well said. Who else would like to speak to this? I don't see any hands. Well, maybe given that, I will, I will ask the Community Development Director if she wants to ask the commission any any questions or any comments on our discussion.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commission. Excellent discussion. We have I am really appreciative of how much detail you got into. And we, I I'd like to do a summary and also have a have a couple open-ended items as Commissioner Ben noted. I would probably do. And so what we see here, we we think we have a good start and a ways to go. And um we have a good sense of where to go. And we heard loud and clear on the caution and care around COVID regulations. And we do have some some thoughts about how to how to address that. Also, the timing and case of this work, uh, we want to go back and just note that what we were showing for blocking the months out is what we could do in terms of getting the work done. It doesn't mean that's what we have to do or what's appropriate for a process that supports the planning commission and their decision-making as well as city council. And it was delightful to um use the draft land use plan, well, the adopted land use plan from our perspective and pending certification for a policy to provide grounding for this. And we appreciate um the chair's acknowledgement of that. I think it really helps um moving forward. And in addition to protecting neighborhood integrity, which staff has, we think, acknowledged in the staff report, we heard the concept of um tuning that to uh caring about sensitive receptors. And that's that's a really helpful structure. And we see full consensus on primary residence as being very important to the commission. And we also heard that uh use permit is concerning and we understand that. We'll do some more research about this. And but this this one is going to hit into another item um coming coming up on my list in a minute here. Oh, yes, it's right here. So um some of you, I noted that you were interested in um a cap on um nights per use, uh, for example, for whole-house rentals. We do, we still don't um hear any serious concerns about the hosted condition. And um that in combination with primary residence and a hosted condition, sounds like there's quite a bit of comfort with that. But the unhosted whole-house rental, we want to clarify if you're looking for some kind of um use cap um on top of the primary residence requirement. And that's something that can certainly be done, and we we've seen it in other codes. We thought we had different direction from the commission a year ago. And so it's um maybe we're we're calibrating to you a little bit of a pendulum swing back and forth around this item. So we'd like to hear more about that, whether it's tonight or frankly, we're we're actually talking about bringing this back to you in a couple of weeks. So just to keep the conversation going, I will defer to the commission for a bit, and I'll get back to my list when you're ready for it.
I'm sorry, Jill, did you want an answer to the question of?
Um, well, uh, Commissioner Hernandez had his hand up, and I think um this was his comment area. So I think we should pause here.
Okay.
Let you discuss because it's the most open-ended item in my list.
I'm glad you saw Rick's hand because I didn't, but Commissioner Hernandez.
Do we need to make a motion to extend past ten thirty? That's the first thing.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Yes.
Would you like? To eleven o'clock?
Second.
All right, maybe.
And then, since the floor is open, I'll just say, uh, on the ninety days, um, if it's a whole house, I think we should have some kind of common sense restriction, and that seems like the most sensible thing. And it's a model that other people have used. So for unhosted, I don't think we really need to get into people's business. But if you're operating a whole business in Half Moon Bay where it's just a rental, then we should put some constraints around it. And I think ninety days is reasonable.
I guess it's take things in the right order. Uh, we should vote on the motion to extend the meeting. Think we can do that with a show of hands, or do we need a roll call?
Winter reminded us.
We need to do a roll call. Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorn?
Sure.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Polgar?
Yes.
And Chair Renick?
Yes.
Sorry for the breach protocol, Chairman.
No worries. Were were you done for the moment?
I'm done.
Commissioner Benjamin, were you seeking the floor?
I uh I was, I I withdrew my seek because I was out of order, given the motion that was on the floor to extend the meeting, but I'm back. So um if I understood Jill's question was whether there need to be some limits on unhosted, a cap on unho- unhosted days rented, that I, that's the open question. Did I capture that right, Jill? Yeah, for me, uh, I agree with Rick that there should be. I I don't have clarity on what the what the right number is. Ninety days sounds good until I think of it as the, you know, an entire season. And um, you know, if it were ninety days of a single tenant, let's say, oh, you know, essentially, uh, instead of it being a sequence of one weekend, and now that one's gone, another weekend, that one's gone, another week's in. If it was one where you would develop a relationship, thirty ninety days doesn't sound so so awful. But um on a transactional basis, on very, very short term, that feels like it could be a lot of pain for a neighbor. So I I'm I'm not adamantly opposing the idea, but I'm wondering if we can color it a little bit better and still accommodate the use case that Rick mentioned about, you know, taking off for three months and having the trip paid for by this tenant that's going to stay there while he's gone.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Gorn?
I think having a an additional cap on days is asking for abuse of the system. I think people are uh want to be encouraged to register. They want to be encouraged to participate in this process and become and all be legal and above board um as much as possible. And I think that the imposing a cap um is sort of leads to a bunch of unintended consequences that could um could be a headache for staff. That's what I think.
Thank you for that. Vice Chair Polgar?
I uh I I'm gonna complicate things by agreeing with Commissioner Gorn. Because I I I think that we talked about kind of keeping it simple. And I'm and and I do think that like part of the concern is, you know, I'm not even sure, how do you, would we, would we even know as like, meaning the city, know, okay, who is doing whole-house? And who, all we are asking them at this point is, are you, you know, a primary resident? You know, of the the res- you know, and so it may be somewhat clear that they're clearly renting out a room and, you know, and for a short-term basis, but we don't, we didn't, that's not part of our our process at this point in terms of what they're telling us and what they're committing to. And so I agree with Commissioner Gorn's point about how the, I think it opens the door to kind of gaming the system and trying to, and it makes it, it makes things really complicated for staff again. And so and I and again, I think that the folks who are going to be be behave badly will are, they will still figure out a way around that is what I'm worried about. And so I I don't know that it, and I think it ends up a lot of complicating things for staff in terms of trying to enforce it. And it, I'm not sure that it would actually address the really, the folks who are going to behave, you know, really badly. Where, and and this is one of those where, you know, I'm always the one who's like, don't design policy for the lowest common denominator. But I agree that this is a case where you really do want to. I'm just saying that I think that in this case, this doesn't necessarily uh really target that kind of lowest common denominator without a huge amount or without significant more work being kind of lumped onto staff to 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 implement it. Though, so I I I don't think it's a great idea to implement the a cap. Not because I don't think it's, you know, these are big issues. I I it's just because I don't know that it'll be effective.
Well, for my part, I, I, I think that Commissioner Gordon and Commissioner and Vice Chair Polgar are right on, on this. And I think that in March of last year, at our last hearing, we, we, some, to some extent, gave staff that direction. I think, I think it's extremely difficult or impossible to enforce. And we should, we should seek simpler methods. So Jill, I hope that answers your question.
It was fabulous. Thank you. So clearly there were, there was a range of opinion there. And we respect and understand all of that. We've, we've seen different approaches in different jurisdictions. I do want to share with you one thing that's going to happen between now and when we see you again with this is that I'll be having to check in with coastal commission staff. They're very interested in how this is shaping up. They've taken a look at, at the draft ordinance, understanding that it was intended to stimulate a discussion like this. And they have, as a commission, been quite focused on nights per year types of limitations. And there's been quite a range of actions in different cities for different reasons and requiring different kinds of research to support what, what has been considered in some cases by the commission to be overly restricted. So this was one of the reasons why we thought primary residents would really have a foundation that was what you were looking for. But we'll do, we'll look into it some more and we can update you in a few weeks, which is what our hope to do is now. Okay, let me move on then. We, I believe we heard that you were comfortable with a six month time period to provide adequate time to get our operators registered. And that you're very uncomfortable with the three years. Most of you seem to mention one year. Your staff is comfortable with one year for those primary residency conversions. I think I heard one of you said two years. I will discuss this with our, with Sarah, with our attorney and just have a, have a different recommendation when we, when we see you next time on that one. I'm going to talk a little bit about the coastal zone requirements. This, this came up in a few different ways in your discussion, which is really important. The question of are they really affordable? And this is something that we will be clear with the coastal commission about in any future submittal because clearly there's a real range of costs. And in particular, hosted are less expensive because they aren't a whole house, a portion of a house. And they're not going to be as, as high end on large executive home type. Each house, whole house rentals are possibly the most expensive lodging in town. So we will, we will be very clear about that in, in the submittal because affordable visitor accommodations are a coastal commission priority. And we talked about rural coastal. And we're going to look into this a bit more. But what I would suggest we do at this point is not, not include it for urban reserve because urban reserve is a district that is hopefully going to be sunsetted in not too long of a time. But I do want to remind you about rural coastal. And thank you, Commissioner Benjamin, who texted me when my brain quit working on that. And so rural coastal is in policy in your land use plan allows a wide range of supplemental uses. And when the zoning for rural coastal is, is brought forward to you, I would suggest that we visit this short terminal concept for rural coastal at that time in context with how, how all those supplemental and ancillary types of uses are codified. So we, we have a place for that. So we don't, we don't need to. It's not a lot of units that are existing now. We don't think this is something to put a, put a drag on moving forward with what are really the lion's share of the units which are in established neighborhoods. And also within the coastal zone context, there's the coastal environment came up. So protections for coastal resources is definitely something we can look at. And note, we already would require a coastal development permit in the event that there is a level of development that interests that threshold. The use of water is very interesting. We learned a lot about water demand working on the land use plan. A hotel room can be actually found to use a similar amount of water as a house. On short term rental, use is likely a more intense day to day use of a house, but not always. So we'll, we can take a look at that. And then coastal hazards, just the kinds of things. I think I'll hold on to that because we're going to talk about the, the notification in the manual. And coastal hazards is something that can be addressed there. And all right, we would like to clarify something about Semitou County's code. Joe was looking this up while, while we were discussing it. It appears that the occupancy limits in unincorporated county are very similar to what we have in this preliminary draft ordinance, the, the two per bedroom. But we don't see a cap in their code. And what we've proposed here is a cap of eight with the exemptions for children under 12, I think it is. So we'll go back and triple check that. But we did hear some of your feedback about occupancy limits. And party houses, you agree that we do need a mechanism that would help us. We will look into bonding. That's a very interesting idea. We heard around the group, interest in increasing the fines. City attorney tells us that she will look into what we can do there. There's, there's, could be some limits on that, but we'll, we'll bring back what, what's possible. And again, on that same note, concerns about public safety. The Arinda example was cited. We'll, we'll also take a look into that. You would like to see the special events definition. You'd like us to take another look at it, although I did appreciate the acknowledgement that sometimes broad and, and a little bit flexible can be helpful there. But we will, we'll spend some time looking at how that might work. And we'd like to confirm that the host listing site would, would need to include these regulations. And we, I believe we have that in the draft ordinance. So that is included in there. I know there's a, a number of places in this draft where there's different kinds of notifications and requirements around that. So it can, it can get lost in terms of where is it? Is it posted at the actual short term rental? Is it on the website? Was it something that was a notification to the neighbors about a short term rental becoming registered? And they need to provide the, the responsible party information. So there's a, there are quite a few layers of notification and communication in the draft ordinance. Parking, we heard clearly providing some amount of off street parking is important and that we should be very specific about what kind of vehicles are allowed. And, and that Ocean Colony parking situation is sensitive. And we understand that. Similar to what Sarah already presented about the ordinance wouldn't, wouldn't dismantle Ocean Colony's moratorium. Really the way that it usually works when there's a city ordinance and an HOA CCNR requirements of some sort or HOA requirements is they both apply in the stricter code wins. So, so in this case, if Ocean Colony's parking requirements are stricter than what might come forward in a city ordinance, then they would simply impose their requirements, just as they have been and continue to do so. So I hope, so one of the things staff will do is we've already reached out and we will reach out to try to have a follow up meeting with Ocean Colony. And just, we heard they might write a letter within 10 days. I think we should talk to them before that. And I think a lot of these things can probably get, get better understood with a conversation. And we would like to hear more specifically about the concerns. Amongst done, noise, I'm, I'm going to follow up unless he has energy still. Commissioner Benjamin, I, I lost my notes when you were talking. And so I don't have, I don't have a good bullet point there, but I know you were addressing it and it was important. And I, I don't want to miss it. With regards to trash and recycling as well as coastal hazards, there's a proposed requirement in this ordinance for, I think Joe, Joe talked about it, a manual that would need to be kept on site. It's really about how do you use this house when you're here? How would, you, you're the guest and this is what you need to do. And if you're staying there for a week, you need to know that garbage day is Wednesday. And this is when you take the can out and this is when you pull it back in. And you probably also need to know that we have a fire hazard area. We don't allow fireworks. All of those kinds of things can be in, in that manual. And we can work on some boilerplate and templates for, for that. Joe and I are bracing ourselves because we know that implementation could take some, some effort. But frankly, if we're, if we're really prepared for it with forms and really following the, you know, checking, checking all the points of, of whatever ordinance you come through with, that will guide us. That, that's what we would implement. And other than noise, those were my notes. If I missed anything else, please let us know.
Commissioner Benjamin, you have a comment on noise?
Oh, I, I make enough noise. I probably do. So that, that was a great summary. What I was, the comment with respect to noise was that it's, the noise problem in residential areas is not limited to short term rentals. It can occur between, you know, homeowners who have different perspectives about what constitutes unwanted sound. It can occur in a, an area that's zoned in a different place where the noise kind of floats over 1,100 feet or 1,000 feet and makes its way into a residential area. So the principle of managing noise in general isn't that well done in our existing noise ordinance. It's a good starting point, but we, we need to do better. And the relevance to the conversation we're having now is just that I could expect, I think the commission could reasonably expect a homeowner to understand their obligations with respect to noise if they are living in a place that is very quiet. I would not expect a short term rental occupant to have that same understanding. And so the ability to adopt clarity in the manual and somehow incent the renter to actually have read the manual or make it available in such a way, you know, if there's a tsunami, he shouldn't, he or she should not be having to look at a manual to know where to go. There should be clear, immediately accessible information with respect to emergencies. But with respect to noise, yeah, if it can be presented in a way in the manual that addresses the concern, that's wonderful. Likewise with trash, you know? You know, put a bungee, people who don't live in a windy area don't know that trash gets blown all over the place during a coastal wind event if it's not protected with bungee cords, for example. So these are, these are, you know, I'm not trying to codify every detail. I'm trying to illustrate the large by giving small examples. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Yes, very helpful.
Anything more on those lines, Jill?
No, I think, I think we have a good set of notes, a good, really appreciate your discussion and how late it is. We have a lightly agenda, a light agenda for your next meeting. And so my intent would be to, to keep working on this with you since it's fresh in our minds. And Sarah and I have been discussing this a little bit in the back, background and she's game. So we'd, we'd like to do that. The other thing, it did come up in your discussion about context relative to, for example, the home occupation ordinance. So we prepared it, a revised home occupation ordinance as well. We didn't bring it tonight because there was enough to think about. And we'll see how much we can get done before your next meeting. But we may, we may bring that along just to have, have that context. There really is a strong relationship between how we use neighborhood space, our built environment for the primary use for, for living as well as these, these additional uses, which are really vital to the community and the economy and, and other things, but, but how to make them fit.
Good deal. Well, I'm taking the liberty of speaking for my peers, but I imagine that we all would welcome the chance to continue this, as you say, while it's fresh in our minds. Any, any listeners that disagree with that? All right.
For me.
Yes, Mr. Benjamin.
Now, you, I just wanted to, I realized that nodding my head isn't going to show up in the minutes. I think I agree with you.
Very good, very good. Excuse me. I think we'll move on to the next item on the agenda in that case, which is director's report.
All right, in brief, so you, you know, the better part of your next meeting is February 23rd. We will discuss short term rental ordinance, maybe home occupation. We may be bringing you a addendum to the Carter Park SEQA document. We needed to clarify something that we realized right after you took action. It's very, it's a very simple matter, but just, just heads up on that. If it's not ready in February, we'll bring that to you in your March meeting. In March, brace yourselves, you're going to have on March 9th, the, we're, we're targeting it for our Measure D confirmation of the rankings. And we have until April to do that, but it's very important to the applicants that we move these quickly, especially for accessory dwelling units. And that's, that's also important to be aligned with state law around that. So we're, we're putting some real effort on that. And to pair it with your annual, can, just acknowledgement of the housing element, the, we call it the annual progress report or the ABR for, for the housing element. So those two things actually go pretty well together. And so we'll, we'll be doing that in March. And there's quite a bit more to come after that. Well, I'll have a bigger update at your next meeting. I don't have, well, that, just so you know, that, that housing element annual report needs to also go to the city council before it is due to the Department of Housing and Community Development, which is on April 1st. So we'll be taking it to city council on, on March 16th. There is on Thursday night, the Coastside Recovery Initiative Open House. We're all invited to, to attend that. I hope you received an invitation to that. We've had a lot of RSVPs. Some of your staff will be hosting breakout rooms. We're just there to support the discussion. And staff's really looking forward to hearing, hearing those conversations and recording them and making sure that we, we learn as much as we can about how the community's doing right now and what the community. and making sure that we, we learn as much as we can about how the community's doing right now and, and what the community needs. I don't have any uh, director hearing items scheduled right now. I'll update you when I do. The Architectural Advisory Committee, um, next meeting is the eighteenth of February. And there's two items. Uh, we have a signage package uh, for Rite Aid over, by New Leaf. And uh, we have a home uh, proposed and it's in the visual resources corridor of Highway One. And so we, we would like to get the committee's um, review of that before it comes your way. And that is all we have for tonight. Thank you.
Very good. So a busy march. Are there any uh, planning commission communications tonight? Commissioner Benjamin, I don't know if that's a new or old hand, but.
Uh, it's a new hand, but it was, it's not a communication. It was more a question for the director's report if you'll indulge me. Um, thank you. So just, uh, I wanted to get a sense of whether we had any idea if we have a ballpark for when the coastal commission is going to provide feedback on our LCP submittal or if that is in Byzantine chambers that are invisible to us.
Um, thank you for asking. So they've deemed our application complete. I think I, I think we reported that out a couple of weeks ago. So um, we're waiting to hear um, what their next step is. They have ninety days from that completeness, so that will end in April. And so we're expecting some information and sense of uh, their, their next steps in the process. Uh, we'd love to hear about that within a few weeks.
And then just as a follow-up to that, I, I'm sure that in some ways that's a gate for thinking about our zoning, our IP update. There are some other elements of the general plan that I know we want to work on. And I wonder if it makes sense to sort of agit-, you know, to consider agendizing a conversation about that uh, out there. I, I know you've got a lot of balls in the air, so I'm not asking for a lot, but.
Hey, you're fine. Um, all of the elements are, um, they're tracked on my whiteboard. And we are working on a work plan for them. So we're not ready to have that conversation. Um, but one of the intentions that I would have is to bring them to you kind of one by one as, as they become ready. Uh, prioritizing which one goes first. Um, there's, there's a lot that goes into that. And uh, the housing element's always going to come first right now because we are on a schedule. But the rest of them, we have more flexibility. Um, but we also have to uh, link in with uh, expertise, sometimes consultant support, legal support. And so there's, there's a lot that goes into it. So we'll, we'll get you um, a report out on that when, when we're ready. We understand the interest. Um, we just, I just revisited them all last Friday and was delighted to see that they're, they're in reasonably good shape. But they always need work and um, we're, we're looking forward to that.
Yeah, I feel the tick tock. Thank you.
Any um, planning commissioners want to make communications? Don't see any hands. I guess a motion to adjourn would be appropriate in that case.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
That's fine. I withdraw my second.
I think Vice Chair Polgar has seconded. Uh, Bridget, I guess the roll call is called for, please.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Goran?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
He said yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Polgar?
Yes.
Is it, and uh, Chair Reddick?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned. Be healthy, be well. See you soon.
Hi, everyone.
Good night, cheers.